Acid.
Here.
Cribs?
Here.
Laird?
Here.
Want to menu on?
Here.
That's it on zoom. She raised her hand. Looks like she might need permission to speak or something. There we go.
I'm here.
Thanks, Jeff.
Smart Hawk?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
We have a quorum?
Thank you, Patrick.
Next item is the consent agenda. We're gonna pull the Carbondale homeless assistance appropriation because the Brian and I were just talking about it. There's not a memo there and we want to have a little tracking of what we're dedicating to them. So we'll talk about that in the budget. So other than pulling that, are there any items to pull for discussion? Would entertain a motion?
And move to approve the consent agenda?
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
And I'll abstain just because I have a special event permit thing.
Great. Thanks. So please let the record deflect as a unanimous vote for the consent agenda items A, B, and C with Chris abstaining. So I guess a six person vote. And so Ryan, you just want to save that and talk about it during the budget?
Yeah.
You'll remind me.
Well.
Okay, thank you. Or one of you will remind me to make sure we don't skip that. Next item is public comment. Anyone here from the public who'd like to make a comment this evening? Don't see anybody in person. Anybody else online?
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, next item is trustee comments. Any trustee comments since our last meeting? Anything? Yeah.
Um, I don't have any meetings that I've attended. This is more of a kind of reflection on things that are happening around the country is I just wanted to raise the possibility or plant the seed of us potentially contributing funds to lift up our local food bank if and maybe we put a contingent or we just add it to a future agenda item. And I'm thinking when COVID happened, we gave a kind of quick 10 grand grant to lift up to kind of be part of that rapid response. So if people are going to get their benefits cut this weekend, I just think our food banks are going to be hit really hard. That's what we're hearing anyways. Governor Polis is asking individuals to step up donations. As a business owner in Delta County, I received an email from the county of Delta asking businesses to contribute. So I would put out that same request. And then I just feel like if we feel like we have it in this year's budget, it's not part of our 2026 budget. But if we feel like we have the funds, if uh, and we don't have to decide tonight, we could get it on agenda item if needed. I haven't even reached out to lift up. I don't know what their funding currently looks like. I know they probably all the food banks I know received huge funding cuts in the big beautiful bill as well earlier this year. So I just think that might be one way that we contribute to our residents locally. So I just wanted to raise that now.
Thanks, Erica.
Yep.
Other comments?
Sure. I wanted to take a moment and relay that I had a discussion with chief, fire chief, Rob Goodwin, last week, I think actually before our work session or that that same day. And we had a super great meeting. I am fully supportive of of the chief in his role and of the fire department. However, I do have have some real concerns and I've heard them bounced around by a number of folks with with that, with some particular elements of their their ballot initiatives. And and I have put together a column for the Sober Sun that that addresses some of my concerns and I think is as 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 positive and forward thinking as possible, but also recognizes that a 1.5 sales tax that generates 3.7 million, which is a 42% increase in revenue for that for that particular organization is maybe asking a little bit too much right now. It I'll let folks sort of read what I have to write, but but it really seems to me that in this case, a little more discussion ahead of time would have been appropriate. I think some of that maybe falls on consultants who have a very clear client and a you know, very clear goal that might not include as much collaboration as as we would like as a community. And so I hope that folks will read that, not think that I'm in any way advocating against the fire department so much as I am advocating for all the other folks who who have an interest in sales tax. I'm somewhat somewhat ambivalent about the the property tax, but in general, I'm more supportive of that because it's not a regressive tax. Sales tax disproportionately fall upon folks for whom everyday goods and services are a larger portion of their income. And so I just wanted to put it out there that that's that's the way I'm feeling and talking to some folks about that. I you know, a smaller ask would have, I think, been no problem at all, or one with a little bit more discussion ahead of time. And I can't wait to, you know, once this is all done, to also go grab a beer with the chief and talk about all sorts of stuff because he really, really, really impressed me. So a little bit awkward and that's sort of what I address in my column. But 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 that's where where I am and I encourage folks to just have a discussion about that. So that's sort of on the sort of very serious side. I want to also echo Erica's concerns about making sure we can do everything we can to help folks in need. And then I did want to share one one light spot. And that is sort of hope for humanity, that that the bone jarring, cart shaking, egg breaking threshold that everybody deals with while leaving City Market with their cart has been removed. And if that's if we can get progress on that front, I think you all know what I'm talking about. And we I I I I hope that that leads to smoother existence for everybody. So thank you to City Market for someone taking that thing out.
Okay, thank you. I never knew that problem, but I'm glad it's been solved. Other comments? Calling anything?
I just had a question. I don't, I think we all received a invite from lift up for an event tomorrow at the Thompson Barn? No?
Is this the?
Cultivate?
Lift up thing?
Yeah.
Ryan's gonna go.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure if someone was able to.
Yep.
Yeah, great.
Could be a good opportunity actually to talk to them about how things are going. And that's kind of what I was thinking is the next step might be to for staff to find out what's going on with them. Look in our budget. Is there some line item where we could reasonably appropriate it from this year's budget without, you know, an overage or something like that? And then maybe by the end of the week and maybe, you know, between us, we could, if the board generally supports that, which I suspect people would, we can make something happen.
That sounds good.
Other comments? Christine, anything?
Um, I, a couple of comments. I am still in that Transportation Coalition Up Valley and we're down to like five scenarios. We're looking at hot lanes or express lanes, congested pricing. Just it's really interesting, the information. I mean, it's just a group of us getting together and talking about things, but it feels like things are going to be happening with those five scenarios and it's good for people who are in Aspen, I guess, people from Down Valley or Up Valley know this because you know, whatever Aspen does, it affects everybody. So it's pretty interesting and I feel like we have about four meetings left to take it somewhere. So and we're going to learn more about manage access restrictions when when using that lane, like maybe sharing the lane with the bus for price. So it's 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 pretty interesting and hopefully that will help congestion. We'll see. And then I our tourism group meeting was canceled, but we're working on some draft for marketing and budget and looking at that for the 26 year. And then I just, I want to to, I got a mail from my friend out in Denver and she's she gave me the September, October ARP article and it just really talks about Carbondale, about making places more livable and a lot of kudos to Nikki Nelson and Carbondale age friendly. It was a really good article. So and it just puts Carbondale on the map for a lot of people and you know, more than what it is already. So and then everybody have a safe Halloween. It sounds like lots of fun festivities around. Carbondale will be happening. I'm looking forward to, I'm sure I guess, is it the first year they're doing that? The?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I thought that was pretty fun. I've I've always done it in big cities, but it's nice to bring it to Carbondale. So. Yeah.
Christina, Jess, did you have any comments?
I was just gonna say to be careful on Friday because there's going to be kids everywhere and I'm excited about the spooktacular thing that's happening. And I don't think we have a meeting between now and Dia de los Muertos celebration first Friday. So that's always a good event for, I believe it's next Friday.
Right.
Chris? Yeah, I mean, obviously spooktacular to it if you want. It's gonna be fun. Hopefully we'll sell out. Just two other really minor things. I forgot to mention in our discussion last week during the Downtowner that the Eboard was had been has continued continues to have interest in like, what's the roadmap to electrifying that service as well? And I don't think they were demanding of immediate, it sounds like those are leased for a certain amount of time, but I think it's worth having that simultaneous consideration of that as we get to, you know, it seems like we're going to be evaluating that service a lot anyway. So and we might get a sense of how fleet charging works with the police part too. So and then the only other thing was I did field one complaint about the stop sign, the new stop sign backing traffic up into the roundabout. Again, so I don't know, that may, that's that issue may resurface as a thing. So.
Damned if you do, damned if you don't. Tell you why.
It may also be, you know, it's another probably more fuel to the like roundabout trying to try and do something, making left turns available.
Yeah. Thanks for all those comments. I attended that Courageous Colorado meeting yesterday. I think we were all invited to. I was just curious and happened to have an opening in my calendar and it's an interesting group. They're just forming to try to encourage more, you know, constructive dialogue, cross partisan, they call it instead of nonpartisan or bipartisan, which I think is creative. So no big news out of that, but they're, you know, really trying to kind of foster energy around people working together at the local and regional level rather than just staying so focused on all the things happening at the federal level that are so frustrating and kind of defeating and and make people feel like they can't have an impact. And I think that's why we all have dedicated our time to this type of work that we do here. So it really validated that. And it was interesting to hear they've done a tour around the state and they do these things about kind of, and Raleigh was there, about kind of, you know, what's working? What are the issues? And people didn't have issues with our municipal government here, which was good to hear. The types of issues that were talked about were like, what about at the county level? What about term limits there? What about a five member commission instead of a three member commission? How about nonpartisan elections at the county level? Like those are county level reforms that have happened in a lot of places and that, you know, we could support around here. But it was good that to sit in a room with people kind of saying what's working and what's not at the local level. And I didn't hear a single, you know, thing that people wanted to like structurally get after. Not that we're perfect, but it's good to hear that people feel like our local government is working. I attended the Fiesta de Tamales from English in Action, just such a great group and organization and event on Saturday out at the orchard. So thanks to everybody who puts that together. Is that it? And then just encourage everybody to vote. I'm glad there's already been mentioned in the election. It's the deadline is next Tuesday. So get your ballots back to town hall. Again, these local elections on these off years are really the place where your vote makes the most impact. And there's quite a few very important tax questions at the state level about school lunch, at the regional level about CMC and about school board and the fire district and all kinds of things on there. So really important election as always. Brian, are you going to talk about the upcoming meeting schedule at all or should I touch on that?
Um, I can jump in there. We have, for the first time in many, many, many years, Veterans Day lands on a meeting, November 11th. And so in talking with the mayor, I think it looks like, I think right now we have WeCycle coming in on the 11th, but we could certainly shift that. And so I think the recommendation would be to make the November 18th meeting a regular meeting. And I think we can accommodate all of the things that we'll need to do there. So that was the first calendar item, seeing heads nodding.
So that makes sense. So our next meeting after tonight then would be the 18th of November. To kind of get an extra week off, it's Veterans Day. That became a town holiday officially a few years back and I think we should honor that.
That was the first item. Second, I think I put a bug in your ear about making sure we've got a quorum on the 25th. That is the week off for school. So whether it's virtual or in person, anybody gonna have a challenge making that meeting?
I'll be virtual.
Good.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Okay.
Was that Thanksgiving? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, great.
Okay.
I'll be virtual too, if you need me.
Okay.
Then the last one, as we get, since we're losing a meeting, just looking at putting a hold on December 2nd, if we need to have a meeting, if we want to do three meetings in December, if that's something that folks could hold for now and then as we get closer, we'll see if we might need that. But is that date a challenge for anybody?
It's a potential challenge for me, but I'll make it work if I need to.
Okay. And then that would mean that we would have the option to not meet on December 23rd. We typically have one that's that week of Christmas that's either right on or right around the actual holiday. And we finished the budget by then and we're kind of in the glide path to the new year. So let's let's move forward with formally canceling the 23rd and then just holding this December 2nd as needed.
Shopping usually is around the 23rd. So appreciate that.
He'll be busy.
And my only other comment, Chris, I agree with your, where the Eboard's going with thinking about the electrification of the Downtowner. What Downtowner has told us from the start was that has to be part of a longer term contract. So I think that's exactly the time to do it is if we're talking about with Rafta, what is the circulator and Downtowner look like, say for the next three to five years? We've been doing it one year at a time. Then Downtowner has indicated they're willing to kind of customize things to our requests and needs. So that's great.
And I did see their VW.
The VW bus.
Aspen. Yeah, the little VW bus in Aspen.
Oh, really?
Last week, right after the concert.
I didn't get up there. I just know that that's an option. That that sounds exciting.
It is cute. That is a cute shovel.
Lower, lower than the vans. It seems like it might be more.
Yeah, right.
Look more accessible at least than.
It's very Carbondale.
Ryan, any other manager updates? I was done with my comments. I think that's all the town trustee comments. Okay. Okay. Great. Well, thanks, everybody. We will move it along with attorney's comments.
Just briefly, it may have already been discussed, but in the paper today, some of you may have seen or know otherwise that Gideon Kaufman passed away, but he was an attorney, prominent attorney up Valley, founder of the Aspen Jewish congregation. He was riding a bike ride up Castle Creek Road on on Sunday morning and and had an accident. So anyway, very sudden, his service has been planned very quickly. It's going to be at Pepke Auditorium Thursday morning, 10 a.m. I'll probably be there if anybody knew him or is interested in that. I have the information.
Thanks, Martin. Sorry to hear that. Moving on to our presentation and action items, we're going to start with Youth Zone. Looks like Lynn is here for that. And then we'll, Lauren from Clear can talk to us about the Impact Accelerator application. We'll just bump that up so that she can go on her merry way before we get into our budget items. Hi, Lynn. No, make it green. Then you're on.
We're there. All right.
Perfect.
All right. Good evening.
Yeah, let's start with introductions. I think we usually hear from Jamie, but it's nice seeing you here.
Yeah, Lynn Williams, Director of Operations. I work under and with Jamie. She couldn't make it here today, so I'm here to fill in for her and answer some of your questions and give you guys a heads up about Youth Zone, what's going on and make a request. So to start off, I always like to just do a quick little thermometer, like give me like a thumbs up if you're like, I know everything about Youth Zone. Whatever opinion you have, you know, a lot. And then, you know, to the side, you're you're always up for more information, like a review and down, never heard of you. Where are you guys at? Okay, cool. It sounds like, yeah, it sounds like some of us know it really well. And so I'll do, do we have the presentation loaded by chance or? I didn't know. We sent the package or the packet before we came. I don't know if you all have it or not.
We have it in our packet. Usually we ask people to join the Zoom and have their own laptop and all that. But that if that didn't happen, Patrick might be able to pull it up. I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, was it informed of that?
That's okay.
Yeah. Other, all towns do it a little differently.
Yeah.
But I could also just just glaze over it without the fancy pictures and stuff that that works for me as well. You guys gonna pull it up or? Okay, go on. Yeah. Well, I'll just get started. So, you know, in general, you know, we're, our mission is Youth Zone provide comprehensive comprehensive assessment and advocacy to inspire healthy relationships between youth, family and communities. And we've been around since 1976. So we're coming up on our 50th year this next year. So we're pretty excited about that. Our vision is hopeful youth, strong families and safe communities. Our core values is aspire integrity, no judgments, inspire with integrity, no judgments, stewardships, and believe in possibilities, inclusiveness, restoration, encouragement. We serve the whole ninth judicial district, which is Rio Blanco County, Garfield County, and Picken County. So it's no small region. It's a really cool opportunity ultimately. I think someone who's been involved in civics, most of my professional, I think it's really fascinating and how we function and work together. When you look at Rangeli to Aspen, you you can't get a better cross section of what our state is. And just so all the beautiful, wild, funny, and real things that come along with that. And so it's a really, I think we're pivoted, you know, positioned in a really cool place to see where our work has impact and how to sort of connect with people all in different backgrounds. And many of you that are from Carbondale, what's cool about Carbondale is it's we've sort of got that cut right here is what you've got the branching families and then you've got all the new families coming in and all the people who've been here ski bums for years, right? So you get, it's just a really cool, you see that here and it's something we, I just feel like we're positioned really well to to understand what our demographics are facing, what our communities need. Our goals are to intervene with youth who exhibit risky, disruptive, or criminal juvenile behaviors. And I always just sort of say, like, our clients tend to be, sometimes we feel like, who exactly do you serve? And I think, you know, at the core, it's any youth who's who's demonstrating an adjudicatable behavior, right? Someone who's just, you know, they're getting into trouble and if whether it's a statutory crime or a real crime, a felony or something, but they're starting to trend in that direction. That really is, though those are our clients and that is our client base. So we provide tools, youth tools and resources to reduce risk and elevate success. We support the entire family unit and promotes healthier family and relationships. We, mental health. Sorry, we have, we have support mental health through coaching, counseling and education. We intervene with substance use through intervention and education and counseling and heal communities through restorative process. And just to sort of like break that down a little more rather than just being a quick cover on on a slide, we really have stepped up a lot. We've in the last two years and more recently, our parent coordinator is stepping in all family or in all, you know, we share family engagement meetings. We're doing that with DHS and we're also stepping in with the CMP, which working with Roanoke High School and Jadi Serrano there, you know, we're doing a lot, we're helping out with the SAM meetings and those things going on and sadies at every one of those meetings these days. And we've really stepped that up in the last six months, which we're really proud about, which means that we're having more meaningful impact with not just the youth that comes to us, but we're really starting to work with the families more effectively, which I think is, as we all know, really supportive. And then we've just brought on a MSW and she's working towards our LCSW under the clinical supervision of our clinical supervisors. We've we've really cleaned, really reorganized our structure and got people in positions to really make clinical impact that really matters for our clients over the last pretty much year. It's been a big year for us. Last two, three years have been really big. So and and of course, we still have our substance program. We've even stepped that up. We now have three CAT certified addiction technicians and supervised by a certified addiction supervisor that's got a clinical supervisor above them to make sure that we are really providing the best possible clinical substance interventions that we can. And then of course, restorative justice is sort of the core of what we do on so many levels. And we do have a restorative justice coordinator that does really high impact dialogues with higher risk cases, where we really do have a sort of a that that really perfect system where you sort of have the perpetrator and the victim that really want to sort of talk and meet together and we can really mediate that well. Cool. So just moving along. Any questions so far? I can, am I doing well?
You're doing great.
Got nothing to look at. So I feel like I should like.
That's okay. And it's good that we have it in our packet and if it's.
Are you all following along in your packets? Oh, perfect. Good. I don't know if my slides got mixed up. So I'm sorry if I.
You're fine.
I shuffled my.
I'll just say if you have any more acronyms, maybe spell them out for us.
What if I drop for?
It's okay. It's all right. Just going forward. You're you're living in your world of acronyms that went out.
We talked about CYDC.
Can we do the same thing? We can talk to you about STRs and PUDs and all that stuff.
Yeah, I didn't even, thank you for, thank you for reminding me that. Always a great reminder. I very much appreciate that. Thanks, Ben. So the one thing that really positions us well to do our work really effectively is that we do a screening for positive youth development. And that's a 60 question questionnaire that we ask every client that comes to us to take. And it really measures five really core places for them. So we've got substance use, alcohol use, optimism, problem solving, delinquency, community engagement and trauma. And that really sort of gives us the snapshot to really see what the risk level of our client can be. And we then will risk, you know, we'll rate our clients risk one, two, and three, depending where they're at. And then plan our sort of contractor plan with them based off of those responses. And so our programs that we can pick to use are going to be, just double checking, I'm not skipping anything. So, you know, so we do, we have the youth assessment and then of course, we have youth advocates that are going to be, you know, mentors and case management. And then we have, we've really, now we can do in-house counseling, which is really amazing and we're really excited about that. But we also do have a bilingual LCSW that we contract with to make sure that if we have a monolingual Spanish speaker, we can also be providing high quality therapeutic services there as well.
What's an LCSW?
Oh, Licensed Clinical Social Worker.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, got it. I just, you're in the world.
I tell that you just, you don't even know you said it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Thanks. I think that's the one I've probably been dropping most. MSWs, Masters in Social Work.
Got it.
Yeah. And I think I did the Certified Addiction Technicians. And yeah, so we've got, yeah, so then we do restorative justice. We do victim offender mediation. We do peer support groups. That's actually something we really stepped up in the last two years. I come from an education background. So obviously I really value, I think, a group of teens together is a lot more impactful when they're going through similar experiences to talk about those things. So our substance groups are some of the most well attended groups that we have and is really positive experiences that we do weekly, one in Rifle, one in Glenwood. I think we do them occasionally in Carbondale. And then we've got Useful Public Service, which is the new school way of just community service. And then we do diversion, so deferred sentencing programs through courts. So we do, we do support all the way up to the high level CYDC, which is Colorado Youth Detention Continuum, which is pretty much any client that is a felony level crime. But then if the Tony Hershey and the DA decides that they want to go to diversion, then they'll go to the diversion program and then they will be have the opportunity to have that totally cleared from their record. So, you know, that puts us at, you know, working with some pretty high risk kiddos or of course, one kid who just made a really dumb mistake, right? They're not always trending in that risk direction. Yeah. And so so we do, so that we do have the higher level, we have a CYDC team that really handles those high level cases because they tend to be a lot more complex and a lot more community engagement, working DHS and other partners as well. And then youth coaching and then, yeah, we've really stepped up our parent consultation, parent education, family mediation and peer support groups. Yeah, so we do have a craft group. I don't know what the acronym acronym stands for, except for it's essentially for parents who have or that have loved ones who are struggling with addiction issues, sort of like an Al-Anon, but for parents. Yeah. So, you know, our goals beyond, you know, with our clients and beyond is, you know, leverage community partnerships with all municipalities, counties, other nonprofits and other government agencies, you know, at schools as well. Law enforcement obviously is one of our most important partnerships that we really value and work with. We reduce barriers to access, including transportation, language, cost and timeliness. We have our main office in Glenwood and we have another sort of sister main office in Rifle and we maintain two spaces up at the Third Street Center that we've had for years. And we share space and kind with other partners all the way up to Aspen as well. So that's a really, we do acknowledge and we do reimburse mileage for our for our staff members to be able to actually go see their clients where they're face to face as much as possible. So and, you know, we've worked really hard to try to make working at Youth Zone really great and which means that, you know, that improves capacity of our team to make sure that people have the ability to really show up for their community and, you know, really take care of the people we need to support most. You know, so 60%, 62% of our referrals come from courts offering both pre and post file diversion. And then there's 24% of referrals are from schools, pre-ticket law enforcement contact, allowing us to provide preventative services prior to formal engagement with the judicial system. Yeah. So those are, those have been increasing since we've built up our relationships with both school districts and SROs. 14% of the referrals are youth and parent self referrals. So that's when, you know, if you ever have a friend or someone. Uh, fourteen percent of the referrals are youth and parent, uh, self-referrals. So that's when, you know, if you ever have a friend or someone's talking to me like, I have a kid, I'm worried about him. You know, is Youth Zone the right place? Come back to that thing and thinking, you know, are they exhibiting adjudicatable behaviors, right? That, that's, that's sort of, that's where our, we, we operate really well. So that we do get about fourteen percent of self-referrals or parent referrals each year. And then, um, six percent of our clients are adults. Um, just today we brought in an eighteen-year-old just because they'll show up at court and they'll, the, the court will make a decision based off the individual that, that will try them as a juvenile still. And they'll offer the diversion track, but they're, they're a very small, um, percentage there. So how does Carbondale compare and stack up to the rest of the ninth judicial district? Well, um, you know, as we're looking for the top reasons of referrals, uh, pretty similar, the top two being marijuana, um, top two being alcohol. They start to shift on there. Then, you know, Carbondale's top third is petty theft, assault battery, then criminal, uh, mischief. While the county, while the district shows harassment menacing being the third, criminal mischief being the fourth, and parent consult being the fifth. So, um, yeah, so not, not significant difference there. Um, definitely concerning that assault battery, a little bit more assault in this community. Showing that there's maybe some more violence that have been popping up recently. Um, top referral sources is going to be, um, and that means a lot of people get confused about that is that, you know, just because a person lives in Carbondale, they could get, you know, referred from other places. So that would be, you know, Garfield District Court. So that's all the CYDC, you know, the, the felony level issues is going to be the, actually number one referral for Carbondale. Um, Carbondale Muni Court is going to be the second, Glenwood Muni third, Carbondale Police is the fourth and Basalt High is the fifth. Um, any questions about that?
I just wondered why Basalt High was on the Carbondale list, but is it that maybe a student lives in Carbondale but goes to Basalt High?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And we see that a lot, you know, with, I mean, you know, a lot of students will come all the way to go to Roaring Fork from Rifle, you know, it's wild or Glenwood, you know, all that stuff. So, but I, I would imagine that's what's going on there. Um, the demographics, um, you know, out of the four hundred and sixty-one we did last fiscal year, um, eighty-five came from Carbondale, um, seventy unique clients. So what that means is we'll do, um, sometimes if a client, um, is with us and then they get another ticket or another fence, we'll do another assessment with them. So that's why you have a higher count there sometimes. Um, total community member serves is going to be two hundred and fifty-three, uh, CYDCK, uh, versus the fifteen hundred. Um, CYDC cases is seven versus the forty district wide. Um, non-recidivism rate is eighty-eight percent versus ninety. Um, contract completion rate is a hundred percent versus ninety-one, which is actually a pretty cool number there. Um, you know, of course we'd like that non-recidivism rate to be one hundred, but realistically it's not always the case. Um, but to see that once, even if they recidivate while with us, they're still eventually going to complete that contract. So that's actually a pretty cool number. Um, survey improvement is going to be forty-seven percent versus fifty percent. And then, uh, it looks like we've got pretty standard thirty-three percent female, sixty-seven percent male versus thirty-seven and sixty-three percent. Uh, demographics look to be pretty consistent. Forty-three percent Caucasian, fifty-one percent Latino. Or sorry, forty-three percent Caucasian, forty-five percent Latino, one percent other versus forty-one, fifty-one and seven, uh, organization-wide. Yeah. So those are the sort of snapshots that we've got. Um, our staff, uh, I don't know. Yeah. So it's just pretty much Jamie Hayes, the exec, executive director, myself, uh, director of operations. We have Vanessa and Tanya as our, uh, business and administrative assistants. And then, um, Ally, who many probably have met before, uh, our developed director. Um, and then of course we have a, I like to say, take a moment and look at the direct service staff because the two people you probably see most in your community is going to be Mariah Dixon or Becca Patarowski, um, and Lupe sometimes. So, uh, those, you know, those are two advocates that are here most of the time to really be supporting, um, the Carbondale community. But then of course you can see that we also have, uh, other youth advocates at other communities. We try to strategize our team in certain regions. So people aren't spread too thin. Um, and of course key partnerships, we, uh, work with, um, all, all major government entities in the region, along with, uh, the sheriff's departments and, um, local municipal police departments and very much value those relationships. So that's, uh, pretty much what I've got at the high level. Um, I know that you guys probably had some, some more specific questions. I'd be happy to take those down if you've got.
Questions about Youth Zone? I mean, I think the main thing to know is that it's partnership for us with our police department primarily where young people are referred for, like you said, if they're getting into trouble and that it's a really positive way to approach those challenges rather than just a really, you know, punishment oriented approach. That's kind of my take home. You know, we are in budget season, so, um, I think there's an ask in here for us to consider fifteen thousand dollars. And I think that's for us to, to talk about in the context of everything else. And we've gone back and forth with our tobacco tax funding. And we're going to be talking about that a little bit later. Um, but I think, you know, there's a pretty clear case in here that the, the fee for service that we pay doesn't cover the cost of those services. Um, so I think that's a reasonable request and whether we can meet it or not, we'll get into a little bit later.
And I would just like to say that we've, we did a lot of talking about it as a team and we feel like it's a good number as far as considering, you know, the, the staff we have here plus the space in third street, you know, to be providing services right here and, and then comparing it to other municipals. And, you know, you know, Glenwood is the third, or sorry, Carbondale is the third highest referring community and second highest for substance services. So, um, you know, the, you know, we're supporting Carbondale a lot and we love to do it. And so, um, it would just be nice. And, and by the way, there's been really good support from Carbondale throughout the years. It's just more like a grant here or a grant there. And it's, it's not always consistent. And I think the ask here is to hopefully be consistently in the budget at fifteen.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, Chris, and then Colin.
Um, I'm just trying to remember the, yeah, their funding history. I feel like they were funded through the tobacco tax for a year or two maybe, and then got dropped off of that. And did you fall through the cracks and didn't get the community grant either, right?
I think it's been a little confusing last year or two.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. So now we're just trying to establish, do we, are we putting them in the, in with the community grants? Or do we try to put them in a special column of tobacco or take it out of the general?
Right.
Okay.
We do qualify for opium settlement funds as well. So just put that on there.
No, that's good to know. And I do see, you know, there's a few groups that, I mean, Clear is one. I think Youth Zone is another. The Chamber is another, Carbondale Arts is another, where they're providing, they're not just doing work in our community. They're doing things that we as a government would need to do one way or another. So it's, it's more of a contract and a fee for service in my mind than, um, you know, some other groups that are out there in the community grants. Where it's like, that's great what you're doing, but if you didn't do it, we wouldn't do it either. We, somebody's got to do this work.
Well, and I always like, sorry to interject, but I always like to, um, just emphasize that, you know, when you look at an annual cost of detention of one individual in the state of Colorado is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. If it's a six-month detention, that's sixty-seven thousand dollars that the taxpayer plays, pays. And I, it's just a really awesome return investment, I think ultimately, another way of thinking about it.
Yeah, I was just, uh, just adding on to your thing. Uh, I, I see you left, um, Youth Zone as a strategic partner in all this. Um, so two questions. One, the role of the state in your funding. Um, how has it been impacted by what the state's going through on the budget side? You mentioned the opium settlement to like.
We're, we're a bit in limbo right now. I wouldn't say we're super tight. We definitely, we're not flush, um, you know. But right now there's one of our grants is being held back because of the government shutdowns. We're a month behind in our financing there. Um, and then, you know, Garfield County just recently scaled way back on all of their funding. So we were getting some discretionary funds for the last few years that is in limbo now as well. So, um, you know, we're, we did go and have a good meeting with them last week, but yeah, things are, things are, things are spotty. Yeah.
The other question was, um, I'm really interested in pre-COVID, post-COVID.
Yeah.
And what have you seen? What has happened? What's, are, are we trending up like percentage of kids who are running into issues? Do you see any trends that you could share with us?
So I, I do, I heard that question before I came here and I apologize. I, I tried to dig around. I got pulled in ten different directions today. But, uh, I spoke with Ally before I came and what he said is that in general, the numbers were higher just across the ninth judicial district pre-COVID. And they have been lower post-COVID, which is interesting. Um, I think the thing he emphasized as, he's like, but we've also gotten a lot more myopic in our treatment and care of every client. And then we're better at, well, you know, what, I don't know. I don't, I wasn't there pre-COVID. But a lot of focus on, um, just really knowing what the risk level is and really sort of really, uh, supporting the, the higher risk clients. So, um, but you know, as far as the last, I, and I wish I had that chart. I apologize that I don't. Um, and I could actually, I can get that to you later, Colin, if you'd like. But, um, just the last, you know, just from the last few years, the total numbers, you know, it was from twenty-two, twenty-three was four seventy-one, twenty-three, twenty-four was five twenty-one. And then twenty-four, twenty-five is, is six forty, or sorry, four sixty-two. So I think it was like six hundreds in the late teens is where we were hovering around five to six hundreds. And it does seem like it's tapered down, which is a good thing.
Well, I mean, it just, I don't know that we fully understand the impact that COVID has had on kids, uh, or adults. Um, so that's, that's where the question, it wasn't to like put you on the spot. It was just, you know, what, what have you seen? What have you learned?
Well, I mean, I think we could all speculate and it's all just speculation at that point. But yeah, there's a lot more screen time, a lot less out time, a lot more in time. But that doesn't mean the kids are all right perhaps, you know. But as far as, you know, kids acting out, it seems like those numbers are going down. But, yeah.
Well, it actually might be a result of some of the funding and efforts that have happened in the schools with mental health efforts.
Yeah.
That could make it easier for them to get the services they need so they don't get to you.
Well, and that's actually a great thing. And I actually do like to actually give big shouts here. Stepping Stones, amazing program you guys have here in Carbondale. And then of course, you know, the Hope Center has clinicians at every school and that you could be actually dead on with that last point. Yes.
Great. Thanks for your work.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Other questions, comments? Yeah.
Um, just a comment. I just wanted to share that, um, I heard from a friend of mine recently whose son has been working with Youth Zone and is familiar with our police department. Um, and she just unprompted, she of course did not know you were coming to present unless you guys gave her a heads up. But just shared how much you guys have changed your son's life. Like, she could not be happier and he couldn't be happier. Like he wants to, he asked if it was okay to sit down with me and talk to me about his experience with you guys, if he could set up a coffee with me. Um, and so it's easy to like, look at these numbers. And we've, if we've got seventy kids who have used your services and I know one of them and I know like what a difference you've made. Um, that makes fifteen thousand dollars that we're helping these kids really easy for me to come up with, especially when we look at our tobacco tax fund balance. But, um, I just wanted to share that it's so, we can get bogged, not bogged down, but let's like looking at numbers. But like, these are real kiddos in our community who are going to make a difference in the world one way or the other. And, um, I'm just so thrilled and I feel really grateful that, because I know not all the communities have an organization like Youth Zone in our state. Like the fact that we do from Aspen to Rangeli is really phenomenal. Um, and I just feel really grateful because we also didn't have you guys in my youth. Um, and I know I have a lot of peers and I went to Roaring Fork who probably could have, uh, would have benefited from your services. So just wanted to share, because it was literally two nights ago that she, uh, just let me know. And I was like, oh, your timing is really good. Um, but just thank you. And on behalf of my friend and her son, uh, thanks to your whole team for, for helping them out.
I love hearing that. Thank you so much.
Yep, you bet.
Yeah. Just a quick story. I was at the direct, we do, uh, bi-monthly meetings. One of them is direct service meeting. We get the whole direct service staff there. And the, one of the topics that came up organically is like, how do we let clients go? Cause like, it's obviously very important in our work. We like to say, once a client comes in, the plan is how are we letting them go, right? Like that's just best practice. Uh, but you know, so many clients were like, whoa, can we talk afterwards and how do we do that, right? And it's like, it's good, that's a good problem to have, I guess is my point. So, yeah.
Great. Just, just to really appreciate your, your enthusiasm and, and that says a lot. And, um, yeah, I think we can make this hap, I hope that we can make this happen.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Cool.
Great. Uh, I've seen no other questions or comments. I think we'll talk about the details of the budget a little bit later. It's good that we have the tobacco tax on the agenda. I was just pulling up my, um, community grant request page that I hadn't had the chance to open yet. Youth Zone did put in for that. So I think we'll figure out, it's kind of one or the other. Um, I think Stepping Stones is in that same boat, that they were originally in that tobacco tax funded group. And then that has changed over time. So we'll, we'll figure it out.
Great.
Great. Thanks so much, Lynn.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate you.
All right. Our next item is to discuss with Lauren Sevier, the, um, Impact Accelerator application that Clear is spearheading on our behalf, but really on behalf of Garfield Clean Energy. So come on up. Um, and I know Jess has been involved in these discussions. So hopefully Jess might have some, uh, info to share as well. And Ryan might kick this off.
Yeah, you bet. Um, I think I'll, I'll try and cover it and, uh, I'll have the safety net there. Um, Lauren will tell me when I've misspoken. But, um, not necessarily an action item, but I think, uh, we knew that we probably wouldn't be meeting again before, uh, the letter, uh, of interest goes in here. So kind of an update. Um, just recapping, obviously had some conversation with the board about, um, the interest in pursuing a clean energy innovation fund. And I think that's really the project that is driving, uh, our interest, uh, largely in this opportunity. However, there are, um, to get at, uh, potentially the project funds, you do need to bring a policy component. And so while one of the policies, uh, could surround, um, that, um, clean energy innovation fund and how we get there, uh, there's also information in the grant, um, directions that if you pick something that is not a policy option that is, uh, on this laundry list of twenty-five policies, uh, you quote, may not be considered if you are substantially different. And so I think there's an interest in pursuing a policy, uh, around that clean energy innovation fund and what that would look like. But, uh, to make sure that we are putting forth the best application that we can, uh, you have the opportunity to put three policies forward. And so looking, uh, with GCE on where out of that laundry list of twenty-five, we might have some good alignment. Uh, a couple of things came to the top. We've got, um, TDM strategies, uh, so transportation demand, uh, related to major employers and what that could look like. And you all probably know much better than I about some of the recent efforts on Two Rivers Connect and some of the work, uh, that could be going on there, which is very much related and, uh, aligned with, uh, employers and transportation demand. Then the second conversation, uh, where there's some alignment, uh, and it was, um, discussed at the most recent board meeting is on off-street parking requirements and, uh, minimums there. So those are the three that, um, staff would continue to work with GCE on, um, fleshing out and then submitting again, before you have another meeting. So we wanted to at least provide that update. And if there were any, uh, comments or concerns this evening, uh, we could have that conversation.
So I think I missed one. Brian, you said three. I wrote down TDM, parking, off-street parking. And what was the third?
And then a policy that would be related to the, um, creation of the countywide clean energy innovation fund and how that.
But that's the one that's not on the list. So.
It's not on their, it's not on the state's list. And so to put forth the best application, we would put, uh, a few of those others in the application bucket.
Okay. Um, I don't know how we want to do this. If we want to ask Ryan questions or if Lauren has anything to add or Jess has anything to add before we do that. Maybe that. Do you, do you want to add anything, Lauren?
Yep. Well.
Make sure you're green on your little light there, please. Thanks.
Okay. So first of all, just thank you all again on behalf of Garfield County and Garfield Clean Energy for having these offline conversations. We're very grateful to Jess for showing up to several meetings now to work through the details. This is meant to be town-led and community-led. And so it's a, an interesting balance with working with community-based organizations like Clear to kind of do the work and make sure that we can bring all the partners together in Garfield County. So we just wanted to first of all, say thank you. Um, and maybe just a quick note on process. We don't necessarily need, we don't need a vote. We don't necessarily need any action from you today. This is really an, an update. Um, the process and timeline would be that a letter of intent would be submitted online through a form application by the town. Once we've just figured out what policies the town would be willing to literally check the box on, that they're willing to investigate, to pursue. We can submit that application and then come back if we're, make it to the second phase to really dig in. So just wanted to tell you where we are right now on that, on that process. Um, and I believe Ryan would just be looking for some guidance and just continued approval from you all for any feedback to incorporate and then just permission to continue the work behind the scenes. Work to get input from any trustees who would like to give that input and press submit on the application. And we had meant to come for the eleventh meeting. So I apologize that, um, that I think the attachment that was attached was not meant to be in this packet. So please ignore that. Um, and so now we're talking now. Thank you.
Jess, anything to add before we discuss this a little bit?
I'll just add that I had a conversation, or emailed back and forth with Perry Will and Tom Jankowski. And they are, even though they're not, the county's not willing to be a lead applicant on this grant. They are willing to do a letter of support when it's needed. So the county is on board with this. They just don't have. So the county is on board with this. They just don't have the capacity or willingness right now to be the lead applicant. So that's why Carbondale has sort of taken this lead role.
Okay. Thanks Jess.
Yeah.
I just have one clarifying question, then open it up for discussion. So I, I appreciate Lauren, you telling us where we are in the process, that this is just an initial like letter of interest sort of phase rather than a full application. So that's good to know. Whatever we pick, and if we get accepted, does that then shift from it being a Carbondale project to being a countywide project led by G C E? I understand we have to be the lead applicant, but my reason for asking is like, the transportation demand management strategy sounds like something that would be very applicable countywide, whereas like off-street parking requirements, it sounds like something we might be really interested in, but I have no idea if rifle or some other municipality in the county is interested. So to what degree as we give this feedback and discuss, should we be focused on things that are really Carbondale concerns versus countywide and G C E concerns? I don't know who can best answer that.
I, I might be able to, to chime in and just say that we would, we would come back if we are again approved to get to the second phase to submit a full application and determine what's the best course. We might let a policy go away. We might want to have more of a workshop on that or still say, hey, once the funding actually comes in and we're awarded, then we're going to workshop that policy. But certainly anything that might align with other Garfield County jurisdictions would be fantastic. Right? And so definitely the third out of the box concept that we want to create renewing funding to support Garfield County residents and businesses. Um, we want to keep that on the table.
Okay.
That's countywide. Um, I think that you all just will have the opportunity to decide if, you know, there's synergy there or not. And certainly a parking policy would be very Carbondale specific.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause it sounds to me like those two, the, the striking out parking potentially and say in the TDM and the energy stuff seem like those could just immediately be workable at the county level.
I think there's some stakeholder engagement and work to do on that to determine if that's a countywide, something that could happen countywide.
What?
I'll leave it at that. Um, the transportation management at a county level for policy. I mean, for the purposes of the application.
Okay.
The work, not necessarily. Does that make sense?
Okay.
My sense is that the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lauren, but my sense is that the grant application is really focused on the biggest reach. Like you, you score better if you have a bigger reach and you're affecting more people, more jurisdictions. So I think if y'all are comfortable with saying yes, that's fine. If you check those three boxes even, like I think we could check all three boxes in the initial application. And then as, as we move into the process, if we get back to this phase two, then we would be able to workshop whether or not it's a Carbondale based. And, and from what I understand, the policy portion of it could be a Carbondale policy because we're the lead applicant. And the, the project funding could be split up. It could be spread out across the, the G C E region. Um, so I think it's really loose right now. And they're just trying to put together the best application to try to get us to the next phase.
Okay. Other thoughts?
Is this thing like the result of a bill on the state house? Or was this a governor's initiative or?
Colorado Energy Office.
Okay.
Has the funding.
A little Byzantine and it's.
It's a lot of money. It's $50 million.
Yeah. It all seems strange. I think Ben, I think you, you got to this point is what is to be put together, something that sounds really good because it's, it's potentially all inclusive with the knowledge potentially that our partners that we would need to, to really implement it might not be interested. Did I read that?
Right.
Hear that correctly?
Yeah.
I mean, and so that, I mean, so that's a real concern.
There'd be work that would have to be done and Carbondale obviously can't pass policy for anyone else in the county. And so our goal would be to find something that we can get as many jurisdictions on board with. But that might not end up being the case by the time we're awarded. So it's just, this is a long process and the fact that the state wants us to pass policies without any funding to do so, you know, to workshop it ahead of time is a little cart before the horse. And so that's why they're giving money to figure this out, find a policy that works. Take a direction.
So it could end up that Town of Carbondale, as the lead applicant, we do some policy work on parking and we pass that and we get that grant funding. And then because the grant is also requiring to get this funding to do rebates for everybody across the county, you have to have this policy component. So we would be achieving the policy component in order to have rebates available for all of our partners and our community.
It had nothing to do with off-street parking.
Yeah.
I mean, we would do a policy on off-street parking because we've been talking about parking. This would feed into our existing discussions about, you know, parking and encouraging people to use transportation and stuff. So we would be achieving the goal of that part of the grant. Without having to convince our fellow G C E partners that they need to make parking a priority because that might not be on their list right now. And then, but in, we also then get to um, get these rebates out into our communities, which is really important. So.
Off-street parking seems unrelated. I don't know. It seems like something.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem to strike me.
Part of the challenge is we look, go through the list of all the things they want communities to not do. We've done many of them.
Right.
So we're kind of left with, okay, how do we make this work? Because we already bought, we already have the energy code. We already have inclusionary zoning. We already have those kinds of things. So that's one of the challenges.
I mean, I guess it feels like to me, the one area that we haven't developed much policy and could use money and support is on the waste diversion area. And I don't know if that's eligible or not, but, and I feel like maybe Jess brought that up at one point, but um, I don't think that's worth further in. I know it's not, maybe not on this, on the 25 list or whatever.
So I think our, the ask of us tonight is, are we okay with staff and Clear continuing to work on this and submit it? And then see if we get to the next step and then more work will be done. I'm seeing head nods.
Yes.
So. Okay.
And, and nobody has any like glaring problems with those three things.
No, I mean, I think we've, we've aired out a little bit that it's, it's, it's an odd approach, but that's.
The whole application is odd.
Yeah, that's the nature of it.
I guess I would just try to strive to make some logic out of if I have to tell somebody about what the hell this thing is, like it can be described in a, somewhere.
Is it also quite, is it also that, that what the proposal, I mean, help me understand maybe the state mandate is, is it that, that this proposal is something that can be taken, not just like through our, through our own region, but like, like are they trying to just solicit good ideas to use statewide for similar communities? Because there are a lot of similar communities that are outside of this range. And if, and if parking or whatever seems to be a particular need here, but also is a particular need a lot of other places outside of our, our region or the G C E region. Is that, is that a, is that what we're kind of doing here too? I'm not quite sure.
Kind of looking for somebody to develop model policies, implement them, and then they can become a template for others, right? Like accelerate.
Pick from a list of 25 that the state has said are great ideas.
Mine, I totally agree with where Chris was going. Like to the degree that we can make this coherent and aligned internal to the policy and project as well as something that makes sense at the local level and the county level, let's try. If we just can't, we just can't. And let's make sure it's not the tail wagging the dog where we're suddenly doing a bunch of work because this grant was available. I mean, that's why the first round, we were like, ah, we're not ready. Like I really don't like when organizations just jump at grants because they're there. Sometimes it feels like we miss an opportunity, but I would much rather see us say very strategically, here's the things that we're working on. Oh, this grant aligns with those things. We're going to pursue that. So I'm not too concerned if we don't get this, if it means that we would have to do a lot of work that we're not otherwise going to do. And we want to do it if it's work that we feel like is top priority. Um, and we've said from the start that like Clear's got a and G C E, you know, clear staffs, G C E has to really um, do the work, right? And that like this can't become another thing on Ryan's plate and our very limited staff. So um, you know, Clear and G C has brought this to us and asked would Carbondale take the lead? And we said, yes, but it can't become something that's really burdening our staff. So I just think we gotta stay, stay committed to that as well. And if it starts to feel like too much, and if it starts to feel like it's all over the place and we don't know what they're doing, I personally am okay with walking away from it. I don't know about others. I mean, I think there's, there's a feeling sometimes of like, we gotta get this money. But I think then, yeah, I would just want.
I would agree with that.
Grant applications to be aligned with our work plan. Any other thoughts for this group? It sounds like you have our support to keep moving forward. Okay. And some rambling thoughts to.
Well noted. Thank you all.
Thanks. And Jess, thanks for taking the lead and, and keeping this moving forward from the board level. Okay. Um, now we've all been waiting for our distinguished uniformed officer that over here, chief and sergeant, is that right? Sergeant Lazo? You're both welcome to join us if you'd like. Okay. He's your security detail.
Recorded somewhere. Well, thank you for, for having me in front of you tonight to discuss something.
Goodness. Thank you for having me in front of you tonight to discuss something that I hope is absolutely not controversial, the police department. So, and before we get into it, I just wanted to say that um, you know, I, I couldn't come before you uh, and ask for uh, these uh, for this budget and for a few increases without the hard work that the men and women of the police department have, have undertaken over the last year. And currently there are 10 sworn officers from top to bottom. We're down three officers total. We have one in the academies currently. We have a conditional job offer right now on a certified officer as well. That'll bring our numbers, should bring our, our numbers back up quite well, but um, this is, this is truly an organization that I'm very proud to be a part of and we are learning and I, I tend to view things as opportunities as opposed to weaknesses when, when there are issues that need to be addressed. We look at those as opportunities for the department to grow and develop officers and leaders within our community. So one of the things I am super excited to be in front of you and talk about, you may have seen some construction that's going on in the back parking lot. Last year you allocated $75,000 for the police department to uh, go electric vehicles. And I am happy to let you know that that construction work, a tremendous amount of that construction work has already taken place. So we have uh, EV chargers that are stubbed in currently. And we recently were awarded $35,000 from the Colorado Fleet Zero Grant and an additional $35,000 from the Colorado Charge Ahead Grant. Those have not been signed yet. So construction, uh, what we did was we took that initial $75,000 and we laid the groundwork for everything. So we have conduit in the ground. We have all the wiring. We're set to go. Uh, and once we have the signed documents from the state, uh, you will see some chargers going up rather quickly. Uh, it's, it's incredibly uh, satisfying to see this happen because the timing couldn't be better. We're expected to pick up three electric uh, police vehicles within the next month here. Uh, and I know that all the officers are pretty excited to get, to get behind the wheel of those new cars. Uh, they still have the new car smell and they're, they're fun. They're, they're very interesting and incredibly quiet. What this, the, the work is doing is we have now stubbed in uh, five spots on the police department side that, that will allow for two chargers to go into each stub essentially. So we'll have 10 chargers on the police department side. We've stubbed in three uh, charging stations on the public side, which will consist of four accessible EV chargers and two additional EV charging parking spots. So you also see the, the uh, you'll see the parking lot uh, kind of get extended into that grass area a little bit more, just to make sure that we have enough room for the handicap spots as well as the accessible EV uh, parking spots. So that's really exciting news. Uh, and that just happened over the last couple of weeks here. Public Works, uh, Kevin Shoresman, Casey Flanerick's team have done an amazing job, uh, as well as Chancellor Larson, our, the town's electrician who um, is making sure that we're we're doing everything by the book for the, per the state grant. Because we can't technically start work on anything we would be reimbursed for until we have those signed documents. Complicated as state grants tend to be. And I, I need to give credit to Dova over at Clear who was incredibly helpful throughout this entire process. Without her, this never would have happened. So that kind of brings us into some of the highlights uh, that I provided to you in, in my memo for the, the budget. The first being we'll ask for an additional three uh, electric vehicle patrol vehicles. That total 254,755 includes both the purchase of three vehicles as well as upfitting. We did find out that when we were pricing out upfitting these vehicles, they are a little bit more expensive to outfit um, because of the delicate electronics. Certain equipment that we have in other vehicles, which would be a huge drain on the battery, such as the radar and uh, our radio systems. Those have to be modified and they have to be installed correctly. And there aren't too many people around that can do that. We do have a, our, our upfitter is capable of handling all of that. Um, we had to make sure of all of that, but it, it does cost a little bit more on the front end for uh, upfitting. We will continue to, uh, with your blessing, continue to partner with Aspen Hope. That's an additional $90,000 that provides us with around the clock, uh, 24/7, 365 days a year. A crisis clinician available within roughly 45 minutes of response time. The other really cool thing about that is Aspen Hope just got a contract with Valley View Hospital. They are taking over the crisis mental health uh, component of the uh, emergency room. So now Aspen Hope will truly be providing full wraparound services for individuals in our region uh, that are suffering from mental health crisis. And that's really encouraging because that's something that's been lacking, especially in the state and, and on the western slope for years. I'll take your attention over to training, travel and conferences. We are asking for an additional $25,000 in that uh, line item. And that's mainly due to Colorado Mountain College Spring Valley Campus. The last several semesters has not run a police academy. They lost their director and they've been struggling uh, to bring it back. I just received word that it looks like they will be bringing it back in the spring. I don't know that that's a hundred percent right now. So currently we have an officer in the C M C uh, law enforcement academy based in Breckenridge. And so that increase should cover three additional officers or, or new hires being sent to an academy out of the area, whether it's Breckenridge or Grand Junction or, or another regional academy to cover housing and all the things associated with that.
So they stand up the one at C M C that may not get spent potentially.
That's correct. That's, that is the hope. That is the hope. Uh, we also have the majority of our officers are also instructors up at the academy locally, um, including Sergeant Lazo and a number of fields. That provides us a huge discount on tuition as well. So it is our uh, it, it's our aim as a stakeholder with C M C that that academy gets brought back. Moving down to police equipment. So our tasers are discontinued. We can still purchase some of the equipment that's associated with these tasers uh, for another year or so. But we, we tend to keep, or I've, I've tended to keep our equipment on a five-year cycle so that uh, as. So that uh as as things start to get older, electronics start to fade and fail. Especially in the weather and and uh being warm constantly, uh, we can update those. So there, the new taser systems that are being introduced are roughly thirty-four hundred dollars per device. It's a, it's a huge expense for our, for our agency. So roughly seven thousand dollars would provide us with two additional uh new updated devices. And we would phase that in over the five years for all additional officers. Moving to other services, we're asking for an increase of six thousand dollars. That would be to provide us with a really neat software system. Currently, we use something called Citizen Contact. The state since twenty-twenty with Senate Bill two seventeen. Requires that all law enforcement agencies quarterly report every contact they have uh to the state. And that that documents um the officer's perception of the individual's gender. Um nationality, excuse me, not nationality, but um ethnicity, uh, all sorts of demographics. Uh, based on the officer's interpretation. Um, that information gets sent off to the state routinely. Uh, Lexipol has a a new software program that not only tracks that for us. Uh, it provides us with more feedback. We we, it provides analytics for that. It also provides analytics, uh, it's kind of one-stop shopping for police departments. Where it also houses everything from information about uh use of force actions. Right now, that's a Word document. It it doesn't, it's not connected to anything else. Vehicle information, vehicle collisions, vehi- vehicle pursuits. And and really the selling point for for us is it really documents, it allows supervisors to document. High liability incidents that are low frequency. So whatever that may be, what that allows supervisors to do is now. They can go in, they can pull analytics as far as. Situations that that would be arising with maybe a certain officer. And we can start looking at, there's a little bit more, there's a trend, there's a pattern. Maybe officers or supervisors need to intervene with that officer. But it it gathers all of this information and it all talks to one another. Um, and it's just. It would be a huge benefit to the organization and and truly make us a lot more efficient in the way that we do things. Um, we can pull up data and provide it to you or to the public uh in a much faster way. Than what we tip, what we have currently. So it just brings uh the police department into the modern era. Moving down to uh radio equipment, uh, wouldn't you know it, our. Our radios uh have been discontinued as well. Um, these radios. This radio right here, when we purchased it new, was about thirty-five hundred dollars uh per device. Those have gone up, and so we're asking for an increase in that line item of of two thousand dollars. And we will phase those in over five years as well for the the newer system. That takes me down to public education and I'm so glad that Raleigh is here. Um, because this is something that I'm excited to share with you if you're not already familiar with. Uh, our school resource officer, Arthur Fields. Um, he took over the SRO program a while back when we promoted uh Sergeant Lazo. Uh, from the SRO position. So Officer Fields is now in the schools. Uh, he is a jack-of-all-trades and a master of a lot. Uh, as well as he is an amazing chef. If you, if he ever uh offers you something that he's he's made, I would encourage you to accept it. Uh, I would, I would say blind faith. So author, Officer Fields is now teaching a cooking class at Bridges High School. Uh, our alternative high school that's located here in in Carbondale. Uh, and his class is full. Um, and he is teaching not only students how to cook. But also how to handle a budget on how to cook at home. And he's, he's really working with these kids. Uh, and making amazing connections, uh, which I I think will benefit our community. These young individuals and the police department for years to come. Uh, that that class takes place on Thursday afternoons, uh, but it's not exactly the cheapest thing to do. While we had our Wednesday uh farmer's market, a lot of our fresh produce. And a lot of our our local uh farmers and ranchers were providing. Protein and vegetables and everything you can think of. Farmer's market is over and now um we're looking to be able to support this in the future. Uh, so we're asking for an additional thousand dollars and he believes. Uh, he's made enough connections locally with different farmers and and other or uh other individuals in the community. That that would be more than enough to provide for both semesters, spring and fall. Physical wellness, uh, we had an overwhelming. Participation with Sigma Tactical, that's an organization that comes here and they do a lot of monitoring. Of uh officers cardiac systems. Uh, on average, police officers live twenty-two years less than the average individual. Uh, and a lot of that is due to the roller coaster of stress up and down throughout their careers. So we have uh, that includes a blood draw that's sent to the Cleveland Clinic. Um, and then they also go through, they get on a bicycle, they ride for a little bit with a mask on. And they provide an incredible amount of information. And it's a three-year program and they're just trying to make sure that they are able to get with officers and predict. What kind of issues they're going to have if they need to be on medications that would prevent cardiac issues. Um, and uh, again, the the response from officers this year was overwhelming and it was very exciting to to see. I know that uh Sergeant Lazo and myself were uh pretty much the only participants last year. This year we had something like twelve, twelve officers participate. Uh, and I would expect that uh in years to come, all, all sworn officers will be participating in that. Uh, and that uh, I think it's well worth it. Uh, they do this up in Aspen, at the Aspen Airport, so they get the air traffic controllers there, fire EMS. Uh, and dispatchers in the region. Uh, and then finally, that brings us to towing. Shocker there that uh tow rates are going up regionally as well. Uh, we we need to be able to keep pace with that. We don't have a huge tow towing budget. But right now, the average cost of a tow for an abandoned vehicle. Is about three hundred dollars. We don't have a local tow company anymore and the tow companies. Respond from various locations as far away from uh, this location is rifle. So we do have one out on eight, Highway eighty-two that we tend to use um a lot. Uh, when when they're available. Uh, as we get into the winter months, though, we'll see their availability decline. And then something that's not on the budget, but I I am asking for your input and permission. Two years ago, we we decommissioned a police vehicle. That vehicle's been sitting at Public Works for the last two years, waiting to be. For parts and pieces to be removed from it, from the town mechanic, who is, he's a one-man show. He's a busy guy. Um, and so my ask of you is. That we be able to donate that police vehicle. It's about twelve years old, has well over a hundred thousand miles on it. Uh, to the local academy, if that local academy uh does come back. Uh, I did reach out to CMC. There, they would be more than happy to take it off our hands, as long as we remove the the external decals and the radio out of it. That's pretty much my spiel. I know that wasn't three minutes. I've I've tried to really, really. Try to be as expedient as possible for you, but are there any questions that I can answer for you on this?
Well, I'll just say thank you, chief. I think that was very clear and concise and, you know, we don't have to go through every single line item. I like the way that you presented this. Where it's, here's the new things or here's the changes. Questions or comments from the board on any of those items or anything else?
I I just think the cooking class is a really fun idea and I I think it's what money will spend, especially if it can be. Directed as much as possible to local farmers and and being an economic development stimulus as well as, you know. Hopefully not going to Kroger as much as possible.
For sure, yes.
I have no issues with this. This is great. Thank you very much. And I'm glad the EVs are finally gonna arrive and you're gonna be able to use them. Because I know we wanted them last year, we didn't get them, so.
Yeah.
Uh, this is great, great news. And I know there's probably reasons why this doesn't happen. Um, given that we have police departments in every municipality and at the county level. Is there any joint buying of equipment? Because my guess is we all need the same thing. And I I just wonder.
There, there's not, and I don't have a good answer for it.
That's okay.
I will say we'll be the only uh, the police department from Carbondale Down Valley to have EVs. Uh, I know that Aspen has EVs uh for their auxiliary and and detectives. Uh, I was just speaking with Kim Ferber recently. We were part of the the Hearst Leaders Forum. And we were kind of talking about that, but uh, I think, I think over the next couple of years, you will see. More and more going this way and I love the fact that we're in front of this.
Yeah, I was also just thinking also like, you know, cameras, tasers, I mean, are there? Is there an advantage to bulk buying? Uh, and it's just, I I don't expect an answer or. But I just wonder, given that we all have to buy these things, they all go obsolete. Are there ways that we can jointly be buying together and get reduced costs? I don't.
I I will look into that. I think that's a, that's kind of a Mark Hamilton issue. What what we see, the trend i- in this profession right now, is that everything now has a service agreement. So even our our tasers, these new tasers will have a service agreement. They have to be plugged in every night and they have to update over the internet. For whatever electronic gremlins uh taser. Does, I I'm really not sure.
Well, and then uh final uh question, you mentioned uh your staffing. Seems to me that. Tenure and turnover has declined a little bit.
It's declined dramatically.
Which is.
Dramatically.
And kudos to you and all your work. And hopefully, hopefully we've been able to help with that.
I take no credit in that. That is, that is your efforts. And then supervisors like Sergeant Lazo, Sergeant Chacon and Lieutenant Kirkland uh do a heck of a job. And um, I I will say, I I know that uh Mr. Highland. Um, in a previous, when he was discussing the budget a while back, we we want to be the premier location for people to work. And that is exactly what the police department is striving for as well. And, you know, wi- without ruining too much for for the future. We are taking calls from officers that have left here. That are considering coming back, which says a lot for the environment, the community. I I just, it's it's really exciting what's what's ahead of us right now. Great, thank you.
Yeah, you take a lot of credit, doesn't it? Go ahead.
Um, I was just gonna um, just thank you and thank your whole team. Um, and. I have heard from high schoolers that they are, they really like Arthur and um, so nice job sergeant training him or. Um, the hire that you guys made, because I I have heard positive things, which is um, and again, randomly unsolicited. Not knowing you guys were on my agenda. Um, so I just think that says a lot when uh I hear from students who are like, by the way, the the SRO is really cool, so.
He is really cool and an amazing chef, but again, he's a jack-of-all-trades and. You can ask him about building a house to car issues, I mean, and and these kids are coming to him. Because they have an issue with their vehicle or they have an issue with a relationship, right? It's, he's, he's truly become this re- resource, a a jack-of-all-trades. It's, it's exactly what we want in that position.
Yep, that's what I've heard. So thank you.
Christine, any feedback or questions?
Um, no, pretty much thank you for everything that you guys do and um, just, I I'll um. I could talk a little bit about CMC, uh, you know, that's my full-time job, but um, yeah, I'm, I I, we have a new director. Uh, going into CMC, um, he was our fires, science and EMT program director. And I think now he's gonna be over uh CLEDA. So I know he's been out for a couple of weeks. But hopefully he's gonna be the person to get that back and I'll talk to him about that too. David Hickel.
David Hickel, okay. I wanted to say Lockling.
Yeah.
Was a name that I I had heard, but.
Yeah, and that's probably another name too, but he'll, yeah, they just. So I'll mention it to him, or I'll talk to him a little bit about it when he's back. Um, and then I was just curious on, um, I think the physical um wellness is is so great. Because you guys do a lot and deal with a lot, so I think that's well invested. Um, I agree with the SRO, I have kids and and that go through the public school and they always will comment about. You know, how well um the past and the present one is doing. Um, what about towing? Like, why, doesn't towing get passed on to the person who? Who you're gonna tow?
Yeah, sometimes.
Okay.
Sometimes, not, not everyone can afford that tow. Um, but we also do a lot of courtesy toes for um. The 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 one that really stands out right now is when uh Streets Department needs something moved for. Uh, or or Water Department, right, a vehicle that's parked on on the road. We have a budget to be able to tow, as a courtesy tow, we will tow a vehicle away from that location. And we'll place it over in the dirt lot or around the corner for someone, but we don't own a tow truck and I'm not asking for one. But uh, but that does cost. And when we need it done within a certain timeframe. We we use a rotation through the dispatch centers, all it, all of the uh agencies do that. And so theoretically, we could end up with a bill of six hundred dollars for our courtesy tow if a tow truck comes all the way from rifle. That's why we try not to use that. We do have a contract for abandoned vehicles. Um, but even our abandoned vehicles, it's very rare with a true abandoned vehicle that any cost will be. Received by the town as as reimbursement through that. When someone's vehicle is towed for a criminal act, they're responsible for getting it out. Uh, but we, we tend to tow. Trying to think off offhand, how many a month roughly? It's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it it kind of comes in waves. Um, we don't have a municipal ordinance officer right now. So Benjamin Yority uh moved to Colorado Springs, so abandoned vehicles. We're, we're trying alternatives to towing those vehicles. But that would be, uh, the the two main things is an immediate tow for some sort of work on the roadway and then abandoned vehicles.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, Russ.
Um, just wanted to thank you for a very um concise but also measured um improvement schedule. I mean, I think we probably would have just given a thumbs up if you said, we need all new tasers, you know, this is what we need. Um, and I just want to appreciate sort of setting a really good example there with with phasing some things in. And I just wanted just to bring back the the notion of sort of salaries and culture that you're doing, you know, we're not, we're not just throwing money at new people. But but sort of creating and celebrating a a great culture. And I think that's, that's something that, again, we should really look at. As as often as possible, because, you know, if you live, if you, if you create a situation where people aren't comparing apples to apples. You know, and just the expense or what they may make. Um, but look at those benefits also, not just on on the dollar figure, but. But of 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 people who who have enthusiasm, who are excited. I think I actually heard about the um, the chef, chef. Officer Fields um experience, I think, talking to Lieutenant Kirkland at some point, just some sort of random thing and he. It was clear that that was something that he was really excited about. He didn't, he wasn't trying to make any case. It was clear that that was something that he was really excited about. He didn't, he wasn't trying to make any case. Um, but you know, I just, I think that, I think that's, that's really exciting. Um, and and even just sort of establishing a culture where we don't replace everything all the time. Which leads me to my my sort of my final question point and 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 that is, well, two of them, what is? With the new cars, I'm excited that we're kind of leading the pack in that, in that respect. I also have a little bit of concern sometimes with sort of. Uh, police officers living in their cars and and I think, you know, again, the more that we can get folks out pounding the pavement. Or, you know, if we need to buy some one wheels or something, I mean, anything to kind of, to just sort of. Have have more interaction, not less, um, whi- is is great. And then my final thought was just like, you know, those those old tasers, maybe, maybe uh Che- Chef Officer Field could use them with the creme brulee. I don't know.
I'll ask her.
I bet you that's in the, I bet you that's uh in the, in the agreement.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, oh, go ahead, Chris.
Um, just one thing and you can cut me off, Ben, if you think I'm going off into the weeds, which I am, but I, the towing, I think, also brings up the dirt lot to me a little bit and. I've been a little bit like questioning what's going on there and I feel like there's a bunch of trailers that. I don't know if they're sanctioned or not. Um, and it makes me wonder if we want to. Think a little bit more about that lot a little bit. I like the messiness of it and the ability to do dirty things downtown somewhere. And not have the fact that we didn't pave and stripe it and make it into something that has to be maintained really at all. Um, but I do wonder if there is a place, A for, yeah, like cleaning it up a little bit and then also. Maybe that, maybe we do want to think about like offering some parking spaces as like you can officially camp here overnight, but you gotta pay. You know, an overnight like. You know, because you're basically within walking distance of the rec center or whatever and downtown. If we wanted to try to be, you know, fostering people being allowed to. Van life downtown and, you know, use our local downtown businesses and stuff, maybe we want to try to sanction instead of squash. All camping, but be able to monitor it and actually control how long people are staying.
Yeah, I mean, I do think that's a discussion for another time, but good to put on the radar. I mean, I've had similar wanderings as I go by there, but I've I've actually had wanderings more on the side of. Why are people using it for long-term storage? Um, and.
Yeah, that's, yeah, but the trailers, I don't get why those.
Yeah, and really all over town. I mean, there's, you know, it'll be interesting if we do a parking study and we have our spaces are taken up by it's long-term storage. It's not actual parking. And just so you're aware, last year, uh, I I I shared with you, we're working with Stephanie Bergner, um. Susan Ryan, who's who's left. S- Stephanie and Susan worked all summer long on some modifications to some of the municipal ordinances. Uh, several of which y- you just touched on, and so sometime in the very near future, once that's ready to go and be presented. She, she and potentially myself uh will will come before you and let you know what those those new ordinances are. Um, because I think it addresses issues like the three-day, three-day parking on on the roadway is. And so her suggestions have really taken. Taken a look at, is that really what Carbonell is looking to do? Uh, especially when we're asking people to ride a bike more, walk more, um, drive electric vehicles. So. Um, I think a lot of these uh modifications or new ordinances that are um coming. Will address a lot of what you just discussed.
And then that'll bring you back to the fact that you don't have a code enforcement officer. I was wondering what status that is since Ben left. So is that a position that's open and advertised?
It's open, advertised, okay. I believe we have uh several interested candidates, so we're gonna do some interviews in the near future here.
I mean, I'd say it was very noticeable when Ben came on and, you know, there was to some degree kind of whiplash because we hadn't had. Consistent code enforcement for so long. Um, and then we did for a little while and it's, it's nice to have, but you know, we need to find that happy medium, but I think.
Absolutely.
Having very little is is challenging, so that's good to hear. Um. Thanks for all the updates on the electric vehicle conversion and can you just refresh my memory on where we are then? So did you say you're about to take delivery of three vehicles and then we're funding three more, so you'll have six EVs by this time next year?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So the EV vehicles, the final build date, uh, I just checked today. It's still November fifteenth is the build date and then we would expect roughly a week to two weeks on shipping.
Okay.
Um, and then uh, once we have it signed by the state. You will see electric vehicle uh charging systems pop up very rapidly.
And did that, my memory was faulty, so I looked back, I pulled up our, this year, our twenty twenty-five budget. In fleet replacements, we had nine hundred and seven, nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. That was not all for those three vehicles. It was.
No, sir.
Total fleet, but was, did those, I know that you had trouble procuring them and stuff and.
Yes.
Change manufacturers, so we don't need to hear the whole story, but just, did we basically stay on budget for those three vehicles?
We came in under, but we'll, we'll come in under budget.
Awesome. That's great to hear. And so this is a multi-year project of, I'm assuming, right? As we're phasing vehicles out, we're replacing them with EVs wherever it makes sense.
Correct.
Okay, correct.
That's awesome. With with one caveat is that we'll go seventy-five percent EV, uh, we'll still maintain a a few elect- or a a few. Gas combustion engines.
Yep.
Should we face some horrific winter storm that cuts off power for a week? I. I mean, it hasn't happened in a long time, but just in case.
Redundancy. Um, I didn't hear any concerns about donating the old car to the academy. Okay, Jess, did you have any questions or comments for this budget?
I just wanted to say thank you for all your work. Um, I appreciate your presence in town. I appreciate that my kids aren't scared of the police. And it it's, I, big props to you guys for the SRO program. I've heard really good things and I think it's a really important part of your job, so. I appreciate your efforts and keep doing a great job out in the community.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're good.
Awesome.
Do you have our support? Thank you. Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll come back and look at the budget update.
He's just putting together holiday cards, receipt cards, partner boards, uh, employees, and so you can all sign. Each one of these in this little box that she just dropped here and she said, we're looking for small signatures. Director's sign this too.
Don Hancock.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are you guys back on? I can't hear anything. It looks like, there you go.
Okay, Ryan was just introducing the agenda items, so you didn't miss anything.
Thanks.
Thanks for letting us know.
All right, um, and then we may have another opportunity if if we need on uh, at the first part of December, uh, we have that. So Chacos Park was a big um item of discussion at the last meeting and I think where some of the direction that we heard was. A phase one could potentially be uh undergrounding and so wanted to bring some additional information on. The undergrounding one percent fund that you have with Excel. Um, and. Looking into that fund, all is identified, we do have, it's not banked in the town, but it's in Excel's bank. Two hundred ninety-five, two hundred ninety thousand dollars and then the opportunity to borrow three years worth of future funds and that would bring the total available. To four hundred twenty-four thousand, which we don't know exactly, but is probably the ballpark of what it would take to do the undergrounding. So. A couple of comments there. One, um, if that is the most important undergrounding thing that we see, I think uh that could be a a great. Opportunity to use those funds. When you use them, when you look at those numbers of borrowing up to three years. Shows you that it's about forty-five thousand a year, so it'll take you a while uh to get back to the opportunity of uh undergrounding somewhere else uh on any. Any scale that's uh significant. So um, that would be the only caveat there is um, if we burn that, it'll be a while before we have that opportunity again. Um, that does open up, uh, if that is phase one, you have that opportunity, that can. Uh, potentially phase one to be more than that, uh, because we did have uh five hundred thousand that was still left in in the budget, so. Um, again, that could make fi- phase one. Or it could also, if phase one is just undergrounding, uh, you have five hundred thousand that you could then uh identify for different uses in the budget. So. Maybe we'll just start with that conversation. Um, and I'll open up for comments on that.
Thoughts on that? Chris?
Jog my memory, jog my memory on what, you might not know about this, but about the. The mainline social thing, we, because we agreed not to underground those, but we still took a payment into this fund.
Right.
That we did.
For a future, but it's an over a million-dollar project and it's gonna be a more expansive project, so I think we said we'll try to trigger that at some point in the future when there's. Additional development along that.
And we didn't have the timeframe.
No.
Restriction, okay.
And we also didn't agree to specifically earmark those funds.
Well, we did do that. We did say we would earmark that, so there's a certain amount, if that's, I don't know if that's already been paid in here and that's part of this, that is sort of encumbered. So that'd be worth looking into. Kevin would be familiar, I think, with those, Kevin and Jared. That we can't spin that elsewhere.
Yeah.
That's what we agreed to.
Elsewhere on on.
Right. We agreed, yeah, we agreed to that. Well, we, I remember the compromise.
Yes.
Because we, the applicant wanted us to say, we'll give it back in ten years if we don't use it and we said, no, but we'll keep it earmarked for this project. So there, there's another, but that's, that's probably not actually in the one percent fund, I'm guessing.
It's not in the one percent fund. It's like we were just hold it.
Somewhere else in the town.
Yeah.
That means Excel.
This comes straight, yeah, it comes straight out of your uh Excel bill and they hold it until um, we're, we tell them that we'd like to utilize it.
Have there been discussions about any other place in town where we? We have a vested interest in doing undergrounding? Part of me is just like, if you've got frequent flyer miles, you, like, the best advice is to use them and and so. You know, barring, barring another, another competing interest somewhere else, maybe, maybe this makes some sense and is a good way to. Maybe lower the temperature on this thing a little bit, because well, I think we'll get into some other questions going forward, but but if that's something that we could, you know, keep the ball moving a little bit while. Not taking funds elsewhere for that, um, I think that would be, I think that'd be prudent.
Other thoughts here, Kyle?
Um, yeah, I'm kind of along those lines, like, I think it would make sense to use it on this project. I guess I don't, might be a question for Kevin if there's other. Places that we see it in the future that we would need it, but anywhere along Highway one thirty-three, I've thought, now that we've. See, I mean, I know that pricing was unique, but that was so outside of this budget or this amount. That we'd have to include that, probably the roundabout will have to be included in that overall budget, like, I don't think we'd be looking. To this or we'd look up whatever this had built up to, so I I'm okay with um. Spending it, when you go down there and look at it, it is, it it will make a big difference on that corner and for that park and everything, like, it is um a cool, a great spot to. Get rid of the. Stuff that's right there, I guess.
It sounds like there's support for the undergrounding.
Yep.
Let's talk about, in addition to that, so originally the budget, the first draft had a million dollars in there. We had a big discussion about that last week. I can't say we were all aligned. There were a lot of different opinions on. Whether to just wait um and put it on the shelf for a while and come back to it later, um, or to try to do something. I I like where staff ended up on this of a half of what we originally saw, still half a million dollars. I don't think we'll be able to do as much with that as we'd like, um, but I'd like to see something other than just undergrounding, so I'm comfortable with. Five hundred thousand in there to um, get.
get some initial work done, and I don't want to tell staff what that is. I think staff would come back to the board with a proposal, because I don't think it's going to be like this, or this, or this. There's going to be something that makes sense in the overall scheme of the development, and that gives the, starts to feel like it's taking shape and starts to, you know, kind of solidify. This is the plan, and we're sticking with it. So that's where I am, but I'd love to hear from others. Are we comfortable with that number, or is it another number?
Colin? Um, well, I, I, I would, I really don't like that idea. Partially because we just spent a million dollars out of our housing fund, and we're only, as far as I can tell, putting twenty five, two hundred fifty back into it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I'd like to see that get back up. And, I mean, I get that Chacos is, is there, and there's been a lot of work put into it, but we're also going to put five hundred thousand dollars into the reserve fund for the rec plant, for the rec reserve as well. So that's us putting a million dollars into the rec fund. And this is money that's general fund money. So, you know, we can't use rec money for anything but rec stuff. But we're going to put money into the park. And, and we're, we're still trying to move forward on the affordable housing efforts. We just had learned, and, you know, we were talking about another planner, and we don't know where to put them. I'm like, well, let's put money into renovating this building so we can get another planner. We clearly need one. So I'm, I'm just really worried that we're, if you look at the rec fund, it's, it's been significantly reduced, the reserve fund. We're gonna, I'm okay putting more money into it, but I don't know why we would start another big project when basically the reserve fund has been so depleted. Why not wait a year, do our capital plan, and understand what other things we have to do instead of upgrading a park that is already a park? I mean, I, the plan's the plan, but it just seems like an awful lot of money when we have some other important things that we need to be moving on. And again, housing, I, I just, I think we should be putting more money into our housing fund than two hundred fifty.
Other thoughts?
Yeah.
Um, I'm comfortable with the five hundred for Chacos, because I, I don't think it's that great of a park right now. I think we need to put some money into it. I think there could be an opportunity while we're doing the undergrounding, whether it's creating the street like we want, or getting those initial trees or something in, whatever that comes back looking like. I think now's the opportunity. And, I mean, I think for our housing fund, we don't have a plan yet, and it's definitely a priority, but there's nothing that says that when something comes forward, we can't just allocate general fund. Like, we don't have to put it in our housing fund for it to be for housing. And so, I mean, I'm fine building up that fund more, but we're also then putting money into a housing fund that we don't currently have a plan for. Not saying that we won't spend the money. If something happens and we have an opportunity to put in money into something else, we'll, we'll, we'll do it, just like we use general fund for the pool. We, you know, I, I, so I don't, I'm not worried about that part of it at all, actually. I think we all have said that's a priority, so we're going to figure out what we need to do, but we don't have a budget for it. And then, I mean, I, I get the, since we, you brought up the putting rec center into the rec use fund policy. I mean, we're basically doing that because we took money out of it at the end of last year to pay back our general fund that we had given them for the pool project. And so we're now just meeting our own policy that we set, which we can adjust in the coming year. You've brought that up, Colin, that maybe we have too high of a reserve, you know, fund, fund balance policy, so maybe we need to look at that. But we're putting money back where we, yeah, took it in December last year, so. I really, I really appreciate staff's proposal here, and I, I'm, I thought it made a lot of sense. It seemed like a good balance.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, Ross. Well, you've already weighed in on this, right?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I, I, I'm definitely, I wanted to clarify, because I think after, I weighed in on it a little bit, maybe last week. Yeah, I believe last week. But the question was whether, I think you asked me whether I was a zero on this, and I, and I sort of, I hesitated a little bit, and I want to clarify, I am on, on additional funds. I think actually the, the undergrounding through another fund source threads a really nice needle. But, you know, three weeks ago, two meetings ago, we were presented with a budget that had a million bucks in for Chacos Park. We had a lot of discussion, and it was, and Ryan, I think you said, hey, like, if we don't do this, that's a million bucks that we can, you know, do a lot elsewhere. And then, two weeks later, the Parks and Rec budget came, came to us, and they said, well, how about a million dollars for Chacos Park? And, and, you know, we, we, I feel like we go out of our way to rightly minimize staff time. And I felt like at that point, that was our time being not valued, because we had made, we'd made, we had said something. We had said, hey, this million bucks is not something that we're interested in. And, and then that right came back to us as if we didn't, hadn't said anything. And then what happened subsequently, I think, is we sort of maybe got to five hundred, sort of, kind of, as a max. And what came, but, but stressing the need to offer really thought out phased stuff, and that was even mentioned two weeks prior. And, and what we get is, hey, have a five hundred grand, and not, not a plan. Not a, not a, not, not some thought as to where, you know, what, what a phased option might be. So, so for my, for my perspective, what we've done here is we've kind of gotten tagged along or pulling along by, by the rec department, who does so many things so well, and I, I don't want to ever lose sight of that. But I think in this case, you know, we were told that we needed to, we needed to get a hundred percent construct, or not hundred, not construction, a hundred percent design completed so that we could go for this grant. We didn't get the grant. Now we're told, well, because we did a hundred percent design, we've got so much momentum, we need to do, we need to keep this going. There are so many other priorities that I feel like we need to look at, not, 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 not least of which is, is the pool and making sure that everything, one, that we figure out how much that's going to cost to run, and two, that we do everything possible to make that as, as well used as possible. I mean, I want to make sure there's lots of bodies in the hot tub, and lots of kids learning how to swim. That's what we promised at some point, or that, and that was what the argument was. And so I, I'm really uncomfortable going fast forward with Chacos. I don't think there's any issue to take a, take a break, take a breather. I'm not concerned about necessarily changes with, if, if there's a board, if there's changes to the board. I think that's, it's, you know, prudence does not equal failure. And we should appreciate the, the work that we've done, and also take a moment to take a breather, see how the pool turns out. Get people to the pool, get people to the, the river park, which is lovely. I was down there today. And, and really focus, redirect a little bit there. You know, there, there are other parts of that budget, too, that I think we kind of glossed over. Thirty thousand dollars for sand, for, for a pretty neat niche group of folks. I think, you know, we just saw that, we just saw that police officer or the police chief come in here and, and sort of like, almost, almost sheepishly ask for a couple of tasers, you know, that are three grand apiece, and, and, and yet we're getting professional quality beach volleyball sand, you know, as sort of a matter of, of, of course. And I, and I, I think there are just some things that we need to really kind of drill, drill down on, and, and think about, think about in this, in this particular arena, and, and I'm a little, I'm more than a little concerned about where, where we're spending money within, in respect to parks and recreation.
All right. Thanks, Ross. Other thoughts, Christina, or Jess, or Chris?
Chris? I mean, I feel like I come down kind of in between Erica and you two. I think I think there are, I agree with some of these concerns. I just feel like through the, the pool process seems to have sort of laid bare some concerns, just in terms of like, our, our handle on the rec budget and the use tax fund and the back and forth of them. And I don't know, I was gonna, gonna probably ask about this more in sort of a one-on-one situation, but, you know, when we were looking at those initial detail reports, I think from whatever, two weeks ago, there were five different employee categories that were all, seemed like rec employees, but they were all broken out into these different different categories that didn't make any sense to me. And I just didn't feel like I, so I think there's a, I think there's a concern there that, of, that just about sort of accounting and like transparency around what are we truly spending on this department, and try to make it more clear to ourselves. And just be honest with like, what the, what is the load, because it has had a load on the general fund consistently for a long time, and I think we just need to be a little bit aware of that, and maybe, you know, plan for what that is in reality for the time being, until, unless we can find a different revenue source. The, but I, where I go more to than Erica is I do think that there's, so, and my, so my feeling is more like two hundred and fifty grand, which is like really not enough to get your wheels spinning about anything exciting, but maybe enough to get a tree planted. That's my thing. Let's plant a tree. Those things take time to grow, and every year you dither is a whole year that the tree can get bigger and provide more shade in the future. So that's my main thing is like, I'd love to have enough money to be able to plant a tree, underground the power, plant a tree, maybe we can demo the curbs, whatever, but like, the kind of like not super glamorous, dirty things. Just the, yeah, the basics of it, and, and not get too sucked into this like, kind of consultant process where we have to come up with the entire down to the screws plan of everything, and then bond or whatever, and go through this whole, like, I think we can like Eighth Street to some, to some degree was an example of how we can chip away at things sometimes more cost effectively than go through a whole rigmarole around it. Yes. I think if we get to the stage, we'll have to do that. But, yeah, so my feeling is somewhere in between, I guess.
Okay, thanks. Jess?
Yeah, I guess I'm I'm feeling pretty conflicted about this whole thing. I, I hate to be a negative Nancy, but I I, I am nervous about putting a bunch of money in the budget for this, when we don't have the CDs yet, the construction documents. I, I feel I feel like we're not budgeting enough, based on what I've seen on the drawings, and like I think we should, like, I, I'd be interested to know who's estimating the construction documents, because I, I think that one point seven five over three years is probably going to double. So I think undergrounding is a, is a no-brainer, because that's money coming from Excel, and we should spend it on the undergrounding there. I think it's a good use of those funds. I think that I think I could get on board with budgeting this five hundred thousand dollars. But when it comes down to actually spending the dollars and, and making a plan for what that phase, what phase one is going to be, I would need more information. Is it possible to budget it and then, and just say like, we're willing to spend up to this, and then, I, I mean, I assume we're going to come back to us with it, with a phasing plan, and what, what is expected to be done. I just have very little faith in this one point seven five mil- million for that park. So I'm concerned about the number as it is.
Thanks, Jess. Christina?
Um, yeah, this is a hard one. I feel like I, you know, I've really walked around Chacos Park. I've taken my kids there, I've taken guests there. And I'm okay with Chacos Park the way it is. I mean, I feel like it's, I know we have this mission, and people have voted on it and so forth, but I just feel for like, the next couple of years, I'm kind of leaning towards what Colin is saying is, you know, I hear more people worry more about housing in this valley than I do about Chaco, Chacos Park. I mean, it's a great idea. I know we want to get it there. But it's also great what it is too, right now. And I feel like with the pool, I feel like park and rec, we need to put so much, like, we got to get everybody in that pool. We can't have another distraction. I think the focus should be the pool. And not saying Chacos Park construction is going to be a distraction, but I just feel like, I don't know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just really torn, and budget-wise, it would be nice to put that money, five hundred thousand dollar back, and then you know, bottom line, the rec would be where, like you were saying, where, where it was, but I don't know. I think I'm leaning right now towards, I think the underground work is great that we're going to do. That's a big investment, and I think that's a lot for that area for, by the time we get it going. But I also think that, you know, we did put a lot of money in, in the, I feel like the community appreciates what we did with that mobile home park, but it did liquidate a lot of our housing funds. So if we could have an extra five hundred thousand dollars towards that, I'm kind of leaning more towards that.
Okay, sounds like there's still some work to do here. I mean, I, I wonder if there's a, in the next draft that we see, if there's something that really makes sense to do during the undergrounding project. Yeah, I, I, I think, sorry, I didn't mean to. Yeah, I mean, I think that's it. I think it sounds like there's not board support for actually implementing any sort of significant phase one of that project right now. Yeah, and I think in, in fairness, we, we don't exactly know. We're talking somewhat in hypotheticals, because I, I don't know specifically with that plan, what is possible to call a phase one, so I think we need some more work there. To Jess's question, I think we're just working from the number that was in the prior budget at one point seven, and I think when we get a little further along with the plans, we can start to understand, is that, is that a real number? Is that, is that where we think we're going to end up, or is it significantly more? So, yeah, it, it feels like we need more information before we're able to, to make a decision on that. Yeah, and it's, it sounds like there's not going to be support at the five hundred thousand dollar level for a majority of the board. So it seems like if there's some other number that could, again, go along with, if while we're undergrounding, whatever we're putting back on top of it needs to be remediated and fixed up in some way, and maybe it makes sense to do X. I mean, I think it's not fair to expect staff to come back with a perfect phasing plan, and like, the three-week cadence that we laid out. Yeah, like, I, I think that's a little unfair to staff, so I'm not asking for a perfect phase plan. What I was envisioning here was a placeholder that would buy us time to then in early twenty twenty six put together what that phase would look like, but it sounds like there's not enough support to do that. And so maybe just a general sense of what makes sense to do while we're undergrounding.
I just want to be clear. I'm, I'm not trying to be unfair to staff, and no one's expecting, you know, grasp, you know, grass leaf by, or grass blade by grass blade. But we've, we've talked about, we have talked about fa, different types of phasing for, for months, and, and, and nothing short of the exact steps to get to what, you know, what, what this plan is, we're given, even though there, there's been some guidance, some suggestion that maybe there's some intermediary steps that, that are pretty good for a year. And I think, you know, from my perspective, I'm, you know, I, I, I'd be happy to, to, to support anything that makes, makes grass green there, that, that can be, that, that is conducive to be done with the undergrounding that provides some shade, whether that's temporary structures, even if, even if that's not in a direct line to, to the finished product as, as, as currently designed. But, yeah, but sometimes I, I just feel like we're better off working with what we've got, and, and if that's sort of a phasing, that's, that takes us a little bit of a little bit outside the lines of what would normally get us from A to Z, that's, I think that's something to, to consider at this point. That's all.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Five hundred thousand dollars that's being moved from general fund to the rec sales and use tax fund, is that required to be moved, or could we not do that and leave it in the general fund? And, and, like, are we just, is that because we've fallen below our policy?
Yeah, the, the policy calls for eighty percent, and so that transfer gets you closer to that eighty percent. You do have, per the policy, three budget cycles to get back up to that eighty percent when you dip down. So you, you wouldn't necessarily have to do that whole five hundred. You just have to be cognizant that you're trying to get back to that eighty percent, and per the policy, you've got three budget cycles. So you could do less than that, you could do, you could do more to hit the eighty percent. It's really up to the board.
I just wonder if we should wait to hold off on putting that whole five hundred thousand dollars back in.
I, I'd support that.
Put a little earmark on it, potentially.
Remind me, what, what are we at without that five hundred thousand? What percentage of the fund?
Twenty-six.
Twenty six.
Twenty six percent of the rec fund.
Yeah.
Of the annual expenditures.
And that again, I mean, all these are decisions we made, right? The housing fund is low because we took one point one million and contributed to the trailer park, as Christina pointed out. The rec fund is low because we had originally transferred money from the general fund or used money from the general fund to pay for the pool. And we said we'd. We did, we wanted to split that and put some of it back and um.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is that why not not put it back? And you it it's used for the pool. So let the fund balance sit low for a little while. And let the rec fund pay for the pool.
What um Ryan, what's is that like audit? Oh, sorry.
It is it um, Ryan, is is that if we live it at twenty six percent? What's the concern on that?
You know, I think you would, you have a policy um that calls for that eighty percent and it gives you three budget cycles. So I think. I'm not an auditor, but I think as long as you were making an effort toward that and maybe doing trying to chip at a a third of it. Then I think you're demonstrating that you're uh in alignment with that policy.
Yeah, I feel like we had a long and confusing discussion about transfers in and out of the. Sales rec sales tax and general fund. And this feels like. Once again, it's like an end run around this whole conversation I feel like we had, which was trying to get the. Trying not to have the rec fund constantly be in the general fund. That it's like, like, cause we took six hundred back and now it sounds like now we're giving it back again. And. I've I'm still like, if they need it desperately, we'll take it out of the general fund in the at the moment it's needed, but I don't know if I want to. Well, designate it as rec fund and not be able to use it for something else if we have to.
So I um, uh, I think from the Park and Rec Commission and from the Parks and Rec Department perspective. Um, that reserve is also kind of their cushion for operating the new pool. And I did just hear some fellow trustees say. Make sure people are in the pool. And I mean, they really don't know how much people are gonna get there and generate. Um, I would be nervous as a if I were the department head with only having a twenty six percent reserve fund of having. And not knowing what my new expenses are gonna be exactly, you know, like trying my best on estimating those. And so. Um, I would not want um to cry. I would feel more comfortable if we chipped away at it. Just to give them some assurance that they have funds in in to cover those expenses. And it um seems a little bit contradictory if we're saying, do everything you can to make the pool work and thrive. But we're gonna, you have to come back to us if you want more money in that fund. So it feels more comfortable to me if we if we wanna do the full five hundred. But we do say two hundred back into um into the uh si- rec sales and use fund. Just help get that that policy up there or that percentage a little bit more comfortable.
It sounds like even from kind of the audit perspective that we should do that, that if we have a policy. That says we're gonna take three cycles, we should do a third of it.
Uh, yeah, I I totally agree.
A third of it.
Okay.
Yeah, I totally agree. Uh, my biggest concern is that because we are in this position with the rec fund, we then start another big project. I'm like, can we can we finish the pool? See how it operates? See how it's impacting their budget? Before we move forward. I mean, if if we if this were the general fund. And we had this scenario, we'd go whoa, 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 no new projects. We need to build this backup. So I think let's build it back up. We've got three years to do it. Let's see what happens in twenty twenty six. And let's also see what we learned from our capital. Um, um. The capital plan work. I think we're gonna find a lot more detail and it's gonna get a lot more expensive. And we're gonna have a lot more things that we're gonna have to figure out our finance.
So it sounds like there's support for taking a third of the deficit required by policy and putting it into the rec sales and use tax fund.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We'll bring it back in that manner.
All right.
All right. Um. Downtowner. Somewhat confusing. Uh, with different um grant sources from Raptor and the way that those are accounted for, but. Very long story short, um, the numbers that we had originally uh put in the budget. Um, not so much by design admittedly, but those are enough to cover an additional one year. Um, of the um additional service that we talked about uh with Downtowner. So that's built in there. If you wanted to, I think where we ended up was conversation about six months, nine months. Um, and if we want to continue down that, we can pull a little bit out. Um. You know, twenty to forty grand, depending on uh which of those you chose. That conversation, I think, is um fine. That I think the the bigger picture that we want to be looking at uh when we're talking about the budget in general is. At the bottom of the page there where you're looking at. The experience that we've had with the fully loaded cost and those grant revenues and when those go away. And so when we're talking about long term budget and um the fund balance over the reserve policy. Um, keeping some funds in there. Um, that's gonna be important because we're, you know, you're essentially doubling. Over the next couple of years, absent any support that we might be able to uh work with Raptor, but not counting on that. Just wanna make sure that everybody's aware, which I'm sure you all are, where what that number could look like. Um, without a dedicated revenue source, but something that I think is obviously become very important in the community and. Um, would be a big part of the budget. So again, the. Um, the conversation, we we can have that about, you know, adding that additional service. Um, but that is baked into what we showed you in the original budget. Um. And so if we want to do a full year, you have that in the budget. If we want to back off to the nine or six months we were talking about. Um, that just saves you twenty forty grand. Um. So continues to be a little confusing, but I think we have sorted out exactly what all those numbers are.
So it sounds like we currently have it in the budget then to go with the expanded service, those evening or an afternoon hours for an extra vehicle to reduce weight times. That we discussed last week. Um, are we supportive of that?
That's the eight oh five, two eighty five.
Seven eighty four. No, I think it's where Chris started. I think it's option two. Is that right, Ryan, on the packet here?
Yeah, and I'll apologize the packet. I think we've had go go back to the advocate several times on this project and. Uh, Jared and I just spent a couple hours yesterday looking at all the agreements and making sure that we had all the numbers correct. So. What's on the slide here is probably the best thing to look at. The full year expenses for we cycle and Downtowner are nine forty seven. There's revenue, the grant revenue of three sixty six. So the net expense for twenty twenty six there is is five eighty. Um, and then you can see that and that's that's funding a hundred percent, fifty percent for the entire year of Downtowner. And then in twenty twenty seven, it goes to fifty percent for half the year. And then in twenty twenty eight, it goes away completely.
And that's if we don't negotiate a better agreement, which I think we've.
That's it as the agreement is today. And this was, these are the numbers that were in the budget from the start. And this is the correct amount, both revenue and grant revenue and expenses to fund. The additional driver for the entire year for peak hours.
Sweet, it's in the budget.
It's already in the budget. It's kind of the good news there. Um, yeah.
That one added driver is for the whole year. Is that what you're saying right there? One add driver?
Eighty three thousand. And you know, the reason that that's so low is because we're actually already paying for the third van. We're just not paying for somebody to drive it. So you got most of the expense already there. You might as well put it on the road and drive it around. So. You know, eve- this is a full year. So if you were to just go to six months, you're only gonna save half of that. So you get forty grand back if you just wanted to do six months. Um, it is nice to have that third van as backup. That's why they have it in case one of the other one goes down. If we had a van go down, you just wouldn't be able to run that third van during those peak hours until you got it repaired. So I think that seems like a good compromise.
Jess.
I just wanted to make sure that we're okay with, like, I'm good with budgeting for a full year of the. Third van and third driver. I just wanna make sure that we have the flexibility to pull it back. If we don't see an increase in. Ridership and a decrease in wait times. Does that make sense?
We absolutely could. I do think that you're gonna have a little bit of a lag time for awareness to happen. So it's gonna take some pipe people some time to adapt before those ridership numbers start to go back up again, realizing that wait times have come down.
I mean, I I guess if the whole board's good with committing to a year, I'm good with it. I just wanted, but that's not what we talked about. So I just wanted to make sure of it.
I wonder if we could, per Jess's suggestion, we check in after six months and figure out where we are. And then we can act accordingly. But commit to the year.
Absolutely. I I think Downtowner would be in here and we would be having those conversations about, yeah, what's it looking like? And not necessarily doing that after two months because um, you know, that education period and and trying to figure out where that really lands will take a little bit.
Is the budget discussion separate from some of the flexibility discussions we had regarding sort of allocate or prioritizing? Park and ride versus other things? That's a separate discussion?
A- absolutely.
Okay, there's no upcharge for customization.
And I think where we ended up in talking with Downtowner was let's go with some level of expanded service so that we can get those wait times down, get more data, hopefully get more people to the park and ride. Simultaneously start early in the year, a real discussion with Rafta and Downtowner about optimizing it. So we're not really making any service changes now. Like this won't feel any different. This won't look any different to people. It might feel a little bit different. Cause there's a little bit lower wait time.
Well, and I think the third van is also, as I recall, gives them that flexibility to dedicate one of them to the park and ride during those times. If we need to, but we can, yeah, okay, talk to them later about that as well. We need to.
And and so the destination thing has been sketched out, but not formalized.
I mean, I thought Colin that the Rafta board had essentially adopted that plan, that there's not a cliff anymore. There's not a zero year coming up. It's just that it reduces to the percentage of rides that are to or from the park and ride, which I think we're saying is about forty percent. So I think we should start projecting out that Rafta pays for forty percent of this. And then we're gonna try to make that better by rethinking the circulator. In concert with this.
And we're waiting to decide whether we're actually gonna designate that third van to be a park and ride specific or. It's like an AP test thing. How do we?
My understanding was they just put it into service and we start going, just regular service. And then we start a conversation about. Longer term changes, but they were not implementing. My my understanding from Downtowner was them saying, hold off before you implement any big changes to the service right now.
That was my understanding too.
But you're saying maybe six months is early, is as long enough to get.
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I just think we need to kickstart those discussions with Rafta. I think those are gonna take a while.
And I would say the six months is a good time. For me, I'm still feel like I have no problem charging people a dollar to use the service. And I feel like that'd be a perfectly acceptable way for us to claw back a little bit of the cost of having an expanded. Thing and potentially to tamp down the high schoolers a little bit.
And I think that again, will all be, I think, a an outcome of that discussion with Rafta where we say, here's our priorities. Here's Rafta's priorities. Let's bring those together. Let's figure out how we can do that most cost effectively for both groups.
Yeah, I think Jared's recommendation on the dollar was to see um a little data from Glenwood and see what that experience was. So we're informed if we wanna head that direction. Just a clarifying question. So should we? Is there anything that's in place right now that we that we have with Rafta that would cause us to budget? To not budget that cliff or is that still conversations to be determined?
Well, why don't I clarify? I'll go uh get the the note minutes and everything about what we approved.
Okay.
So Rafta has some other funding challenges and this is funding that is above our fund balance. Right? So if we don't have the fund balance, Rafta doesn't have that money. That's another ongoing conversation. So just like. We don't have enough money for everything we wanna do. They don't have enough money for what we're gonna do. But I think our advantage is. They already provide service in the community in ways they don't in others. So I think we have a neat opportunity to figure out. How do we use that money more effi- efficiently? And that might allow us to not have a cliff going forward. But the the proposal is for the next few years, it's gonna be the percentage of riders to the park and ride. Will be Rafta's match. And we guess that's forty and we talked, we mentioned, okay, Downtowner, make it fifty.
Right.
But it sounds like we need to get confirmation of that.
We'll get confirmation of that.
Yeah, and and we can project out more accurately if we're not gonna completely clip out.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, the logical thing to me would feel like ideally we are going towards a. Reality where we have like five vans and no circulator and a simpler thing altogether, hopefully. But you know, obviously we have to study it, but.
And and it it's not just us. So we have a contract, Rafta has a contract with we cycle for the whole region. Why don't we have a contract with Downtowner for the whole region? We all need it.
And and the Garfield County Traveler, I think that's a continued discussion. We should leave them in on, cause I know they're taking it in the teeth.
Yeah.
Budgetarily on that, so.
Okay, for tonight, I think you have what you need.
Thank you.
We're doing the year long expanded service. What's in the budget? And then we'll come back to those discussions.
Yeah, we'll come back with how exactly that will work.
Okay, next item, tobacco tax.
Okay, tobacco tax. Um, this one is um. A little bit confusing and this is the one where I would ask for a little bit of um time from the board. I think when we're, I heard some comments tonight, I think about maybe, maybe we've funded stepping stones out of this before or. And I think when all I'm are looking back, we don't see that anywhere. So I think we're we're a little confused. It looks like. The only place that we can identify uh that we've spent tobacco dollars is on uh school district and youth zone. And so I'm not sure if there was board direction um that other things were supposed to have come out of that. But it doesn't look like that is what had happened historically. So.
I think Erica might have some insight on that.
Um, it just clicked and I we I could go back and look in notes, but I think what we would do is. Cause the school district was managing the um. Family, the youth advisory board for us and kind of saw it as like a grant program. Cause we didn't wanna put it on staff to administer this funding as grants. So as I recall, that's why it would look like we only gave it all to the school district.
Okay.
But really then it was um just the school district was kind of playing as like the fiscal sponsor. For the organizations and then stepping stones got some youth zone. Then there was some admin. Yeah, the family resource center. Yeah. So I think I think that's why that was why it would show up. It's just for the school district.
It's confusing that youth zone would show up. You'd feel like that wouldn't show up though, in that case, like.
Did they show up?
Bucket with the other two.
Every year or was there just a, okay, I think there was another year where we, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like one one year was five thousand, another year was thirty five hundred, then there was no money one year and then we budgeted five thousand this year.
Kind of happens every year and it'd be great to get it.
Yeah.
It resolves.
Yeah, if we can have a little more time, I think we'll get there. I think uh at a high level, I think what we're what we're looking for. Um, to uh Mayor Pro Tem's point um a couple meetings ago is specifically tracking. Where this is going and understanding if we have a fund balance or not. We can do that without a specific fund. It does look like. When you're looking at twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, we were not spending all of those dollars specifically, at least for. Um, those entities. I think, you know, the ballot language is pretty broad and there's, you know, physical health is in there as well. So. So did that go to some recreation offerings? It's just not really tracked. So I think moving forward, we wanna make sure that. Um, and and it'll probably be easier because that fund looks like it's uh or that tax looks like it's tapering off. Um, but understanding exactly um if there's anything left at the end of the year. The other thing that I'm not clear on right now is uh this projected year end is a number that was plugged in and I don't know. Uh, what we had committed to the district and if that's a a true number at the end. Um, so again, I think we need to do a little more work before we can provide some good um opportunity for conversation. The number at the very end uh is just a calculation of there, there's not really a fund balance. That number just lives in your general fund. You know, that one point six fund balance over the reserve policy that we're projecting. So I don't know that that's necessarily. I mean, it's available to you, but it's available to you through the through the fund balance in the general fund. Um, so. You know, I you can look at that in a couple of different ways. I'm I'm sure that we have spent um those dollars and then some. Probably on on physical health, recreation offerings. So again, I think we have a little more homework to do. To go back to figure out exactly where we sit, but we do understand that, yeah, there's a desire moving forward to have some more specific tracking on. How we're spending that and uh to see if there is an opportunity to do something, I guess, like we had previously done. Where the school district is bringing some of those other groups into that funding. So. I know that's not super clear, but that's, um, kind of, if we can do a little more homework and figure out exactly where we are there, that'd be great.
I heard when Youth Zone was making a presentation, I immediately thought, ooh, should we have stepping stone make a presentation to us? Cause it's, it's like.
Can of worms.
Can of worms. Um, so I don't have an answer, uh, but I just thought, given that we had given the money in the past, it's, I don't know. It just seems kind of awkward.
And they're all in our community grant request right now. I looked it up tonight. Family Resource Center's in there, stepping stones in there and youth zones in there, but they're all maxed out at the seven thousand amount. So I think we kind of need to know as we put that spreadsheet together, um, if we're going to consider funding them back through this. And even if it's not a convoluted process through the school district.
Yeah.
Like if, if we're projecting that we're going to receive two hundred and forty-five thousand and the school district's asking for a hundred and twenty, that leaves us hundred and twenty-five thousand sort of to play with. I mean, we could easily give each of those groups, say fifteen thousand, which was Youth Zone's asking, just start there.
Mm-hmm.
Take them out of the community grant process, not come up with any big other convoluted thing and sit on a little bit of other money right now. Um.
Yeah, I think that the other number that we don't have, when the school district was here, there was a conversation about, um, folks in the middle school. And I think that seemed to be important to the board. And so getting a number, understanding what that would be is something that we would come back with as well.
Okay. I, I just think, I guess our next need to know is whether to grant those groups anything through the community grant process. And that's going to be over the next couple of weeks as we're working on that. So maybe just everybody know that staff will be working on this. Don't cause yourself too much, you know, mental anguish over how much to grant those three groups in the community grant process, because we may want to just allocate them something from this.
Stepping stone?
Stepping stones, youth zone and family resource center. Those were the three that were originally part of that other pot of money. And then I think going forward, after all this, if we go back to some other way to do this, maybe there's other groups can apply for that fund. And I mean, I would see the Andy Zinko Youth Empowerment Program would probably apply and you know, all these other groups would apply.
Or, or at least, I mean, there are a few, um, like substance abuse organizations that, uh, apply in our community grants as well. And so I have thought about those, like there's, I think it was like two or three that also help. So, um, yeah, but I think that's a good approach for now. I do want to say, even though this feels imperfect, I feel like we're getting more information about this line item than we have in a long time. So.
Yeah.
This is great. Like this is super humble. Um, because we've kind of asked every year, like, well, what do we have and what have we spent? And it never really got a, a ton of clarity on it. So.
Thanks. That's helpful, Chris.
Um, yeah, I, I agree with that. And I think it does sort of convince me further that I think maybe not immediately, but in the long run, it seems cleaner for us to move towards establishing this as a fund. And I think I'd like to see marijuana go into it too. Um, that might change the, um, fund calculus a tiny bit as well. I feel like the marijuana had similar aims when that tax was passed. I don't know, but.
It, it did. I think the language was somewhat similar.
But that would, I feel like it would be, yeah, it'd just be nice. I like these clean funds where I sort of understand that bucket is really clear what that is and.
And it sounds like there's multiple ways to get to that same.
Yeah, I think even without a fund, to Mayor Pro Tem's point, we can, we can get the clarity that we maybe have not had in the past and we don't necessarily need a fund to do that. And we have a lot of funds and uh, I think in, speaking with our auditor, they charge you by the fund. And so there's maybe some reasons that if we can get there without having another fund, but, um, we're absolutely hearing, yeah, we want to be able to see. Um, and it makes sense. I mean, there was, there was ballot language and so we ought to be identifying that clearly, uh, even if it's just in the general fund. So more to come there. I'm glad that maybe there's, there's more than we've had, but we certainly can make this, uh, more clear and appreciate your patience on it.
Thank you. And, um, my question is, in the past, if they, if we were giving them money from like this tobacco tax, it, it was okay for them to also apply for the community grant?
Always one or the other. And that's why it's been really muddy the past couple of years, because when we moved away from that school district managed other grant program, then these groups started asking, can we just come do a big presentation to you and ask for a lot of money? And we said, no, just apply through the community grant. And they all have a good case for why we should support them at a higher rate than that. Um, so it's been this really challenging, changing thing. So no, there was never the intent though, to say, apply for a seven thousand dollar community grant and a fifteen or twenty thousand dollar tobacco tax grant. It's one or the other. And this year we routed them all toward the community grant. But stepping stones is reaching out and youth zones presenting and, um, yeah, it doesn't seem right.
Does, does, does the school district prefer one way or do they, do they like being sort of the intermediary?
They don't have the bandwidth.
They prefer, okay, okay.
Yeah. An- Angela was the person who kind of coalesced all this and then she was promoted to superintendent and had no time. So.
And we didn't backfill.
Okay.
Okay. Um, plugging along, housing, um, I don't think there's anything new in here, but this is just kind of, um, you know, putting a focus on what that, um, function looks like. Um, I, I did, um, make one change. I think when we had a hundred thousand dollars in for master lease expense, I think, um, we would call that employee housing assistance program. And I don't know exactly what that is right now. I think we need to do some work to figure out exactly what that is. So just kind of renaming, but leaving some dollars in there, um, for that purpose. Um, so any questions? I think, uh, you know, um, Colin had asked the question, um, about building that reserve up. We do have the two hundred thousand that's going in and that's the aim, I think, or has been the aim of the board to try and, uh, grow that over time.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify. So there's, we're going to have a projected end balance in that fund at the end of the year of five hundred seventy-eight thousand. And then we'll add two hundred. So we'll be up to almost eight hundred thousand.
That five seventy-eight should include the two hundred.
Okay. Oh, right. I was thinking end fund for twenty twenty-five. That's why I asked. Yeah.
Yep. I, I totally get, you know, budgets are challenging. We don't have enough money for all we want to do. We were really fortunate to have that kind of money in the fund when the residents came to us to ask for help in the mobile home park. Um, there's going to be other mobile home parks that are going to come before us. I'm not saying we can do another million dollars, but I'd love to have more money in there so we can work with them. Um, we've also talked, uh, specifically about staff housing. And that's where I think this money would come from, from our housing fund for staff, um, whether it's, uh, repair. I know we're going to do capital improvements. So this has been something we've been talking about since I got on the board and, and I just really want to find a way to augment what we put in there and really make it a high priority. And I, I appreciate Erica's comments about we can, we can put more money if we need to, but it sets a standard of where our budget is and where we're trying to go. And it tells everybody else the regional issues could use more money. Um, the buy down could use more money. So there's a lot of housing work that could use more money and that's where I'd like to see more of our resources go.
So this is similar to the discussion we just had about the rec fund in a lot of ways, right? We can transfer money from the general fund into one of these more restricted funds and keep it there and restrict it to that use so that it's feels very available for that use. Or we can leave it in the general fund and when a need comes up, we can spend it on that out of the general fund or in that fund. And I see, you know, advantages both ways, but we just had a whole discussion about not putting money into the rec fund because then it's restricted and leaving it in the general fund. Um.
And I, and I totally get that. I'm open to, uh, ways to think about it. I just think, given how much affordable housing has been brought up.
Yeah.
It, it's just, and it's really expensive. So, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be needed as we move forward.
So do you have a proposal?
Um, I would like to at least double what we're putting in instead of two hundred thousand. I thought it was two fifty, but that's okay. Um, I'd like to at least put five hundred thousand dollars in there.
Other thoughts?
I, I might just point that I think the three of us who are the newest all, all seem to, to frequently reference housing and, um, housing. And one thirty-three, I think is really is our, is our main points sort of during campaigns. And it's not shiny and it's not, it's, it's not, um, but it's, but it's important. Um, and, and I think, I think it's, I think it's, it does speak to, to priorities to, to fill that, that fund, um, or to start to, um, and I, I think there's also a track record there recently this year in particular with, um, buy downs and, and with, with the mobile home park as well. Um, all I think big successes. Um, so I would, I would like to, to see, see maybe a little bit more put in there as well.
Anybody else?
Yeah. I just want to counter that. I think housing is very shiny. I mean, it's a super high priority.
Yeah.
And the fact that we put in one point one million dollars into mobile home park is massive and Basalt still hasn't come up to that amount, but I just think, let's not downplay that like.
Fair enough.
Housing is, is, it is totally a big deal. Everybody. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm fine putting funds in there. I think even if our housing fund hadn't been at the size it was, we would have put a million dollars out of our general fund into the mobile home park. Um, so I am actually kind of ambivalent as to, because I know it's a priority and I think we'll find the funding in our budget if a opportunity comes up this coming year.
I mean, maybe on the next draft, staff could increase that somewhat, but it's hard for us to pin down an exact number. We're just kind of picking numbers right now. Um, but with the goal of, you know, increasing that fund balance so that it, it shows our priorities and it shows that we're, we're ready to spend that. We've allocated it over there. It makes us more ready to spend when an opportunity arises. Um, I don't know that I'd be ready to go as high as half a million, just because I think there's going to be this big project where we're going to look at all these capital needs, like we just talked about on, uh, Chacos Park. And, uh, you know, I think Town Center is going to be part of that. The roundabout is going to be part of that, Chacos and other priorities. Um, and then I think that we'll look at how do we allocate our general fund to these different things at that point. But I can be comfortable with something over two hundred going in there. And I would agree, it's been a, it's been an issue for as long as any of us have been here and, and something that we've, I mean, in our time on this board, we've created our first dedicated source of funding for this fund, which is the two hundred and some thousand dollars a year from the short-term rentals. We've started these annual transfers. That didn't used to happen. This fund had like sixty thousand dollars in it. And it was just from rent revenue from staff and the occasional real estate transfer assessment at Keter Grove. Um, so I think we've, we've done pretty decent work, um, and we need to keep moving in that direction. Any other thoughts on that to give staff direction or is that enough? Do you need a number?
We'll come back with something more than two hundred, but less than five hundred. And, um, everyone will react and we'll keep, keep moving forward. I think it's, I think that works. All right. Um, we're getting close. We're getting close. Um, just a couple of things. You did have, uh, GCE here, and so we have plugged that five percent increase in, uh, clears it, the, the number that they had, um, historically been at, and there was not an increased request there. Um, we did, we had pulled out, um, but I'm recommending now that we leave, um, the one fifty that was in the town manager professional services, um, previously, um, we've talked about, uh, asset management, facilities, capital planning. Um, maybe facilities master plan is something that we ought to be thinking about when we're talking about not just remodeling this building, but what, what would the needs be if we were, um, looking at a new police facility? You know, we've got downtown work. I think I've, uh, shared kind of a draft with you on maybe some work that we do there. So just making sure that we have the resources uh, in the budget, uh, to undertake some of that strategic planning. So, um, leaving that where it was in the prior budget. Um, talked about AV, uh, with this microphone cutting out here and there. I love that thirty thousand dollars, um, but just plugging something in there. And then two other things that I just wanted to float out there, um, you know, in meeting with Carbondale Arts, I think looking at them, everything that I've experienced since I've started is there's really, it's kind of the three-legged stool and we're talking about economic development. And it is a partnership with, uh, Carbondale Arts, the chamber and the town. And so, um, this, this was not really their request, but just bringing some parity in, um, the forty thousand dollars that we provide to the chamber. I know that we also do the lodging, but there's forty thousand identified, um, from the general fund for that as a first step in trying to, um, get some parity there. And then I think in the next budget, there will be a lot more, um, information that we have about, you know, what does that economic development partnership look like? What is on Carbondale Arts? I just know that they do an incredible amount on kind of a shoestring, uh, for being such a critical partner. So, um, that was my plug. I did ask, I looked at Andrea and said, you know, the board has, you've heard the board say, hey, what do you need? And she said, you know, for right now, I think we actually have what we need. So credit her for not jumping on a, a door that I opened up. Uh, then the second one, um, I don't know if it was, I think it was prior to my arrival, but there have been some conversations about wayfinding. And I think there, uh, is, uh, maybe an expectation with some of the commissions that we have that will be undertaking some level of, uh, whether it's a pilot or some kind of work. And so just making sure that we're plugging some number in there to be able to start looking at wayfinding. Then, uh, don't want to forget, um, homeless assistance, just because, uh, that is not a nonprofit and doesn't slot in anywhere else. And when we're talking about, uh, making payments and auditors and just making sure that we have some level of conversation about what number we plug in. Uh, I think there's already a line item that we pull out, uh, uh, for that, which we don't need to make an adjustment, but just being on the record with what is the amount that the board, uh, feels appropriate, uh, to fund that in twenty twenty-six?
And what was her request? Cause I didn't write it. I looked back at my notes and I thought I'd written it down.
Historically, it's been fifteen hundred. Um, when I had chatted with her, you know, um, just CPI increases since that was established, I think, uh, would lend, uh, to two thousand dollars. I think her ask at the podium was four thousand.
And in the past, that was directly came back to the town. We, we, again, we took it out of one fund and it went into another. We took it out of the general fund and then they went and bought rec, uh, shower passes, um, with it, and then they distribute those. So that was, that was the use. So it was not a net loss to the town really. Um, are we comfortable with two thousand? Do we want to do something more than that?
Good to me.
That's good.
Two thousand?
Two thousand.
Okay. Let's do two thousand. And if she wants to make the case that it needs to be radically different than that, I think we can, it's a small enough number, even mid-year. If she ran out of passes.
Yeah. We just need something which you just did that Ola can action on. So.
Okay.
We're good.
Yeah.
Um, and I just wanted to say thanks for, um, kind of advocating for Carbondale Arts. And I was thinking that when they came and presented us as well. I don't remember if I said anything, but, um, I do feel like they bring a ton of that kind of, it, it felt like there needed to be more parity between the two organizations. Um, and they've done such a fabulous job on really vamping first Fridays and really making it something special and finding out that they paid for the tables and chairs. You know, I just feel like, um, they are operating on a shoestring and really want to reward, uh, the efforts that they're doing on all that, all that work.
So is there general board support with funding Carbondale Arts at the same level as the chamber of the forty thousand dollars?
Absolutely.
As our economic development partner?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds like there's support for that. Did you need feedback on any of those others?
Just, just wayfinding. Maybe it's educating me a little bit on some of those conversations, but I just wanted to make sure that, um, if we want to do something there that we have, have some funds to do that.
I'm waiting here.
I think it only, I mean, it really just came up because it was, um, something that the creative district would bring up at different times. And then with the map project and bike ped, they'd talk about it. And then I was in the Parks and Rec Commission meetings and they're talking about their new signage. And it just felt like we're suddenly going to have a whole bunch of signs that might have different looks or we might be hiring a bunch of different wayfinding consultants. So I encouraged everybody to get together and talk. And then it's now turned into a whole wayfinding committee, which is fine. It sounds like they're productive and doing good stuff. So, um.
E board is also looking at signage at the Thompson House.
Okay.
Ground gardens. I don't know if that has to be actually, has to necessarily conform with anything else, but.
Yeah, but I have wondered if at some point there's going to be a budget request or need to put some money. So maybe we put a placeholder in and see
Yeah.
where it goes.
Part of that could even be a, for the, for the same price or not a whole lot more, sort of just some design standards. I mean, that's sort of like every company has their sort of design standards, their fonts. You know, their official logo, you know, and, and it's not, it's a pretty common practice for a graphic, a good graphic designer to do. Um, and, and that goes a long way to like making sure that the wayfinding at least starts to look good or it starts to look similar if that's one of the goals. So I, I don't know where that fits in or if that's a next year thing, but definitely there, I think that can be worthwhile.
Yeah.
Part of the process.
Arms around it. I don't know what it is or what we do, but it feels like it takes some dollars to. Arms around it. I don't know what it is or what we do, but it feels like it takes some dollars to figure that out uh and potentially do some implementation.
I know there was a lot of signage done around the River Park. I'm not sure if that's beautiful, you know, do we steal that design? You know, language, I don't know, but um.
Or ask those designers if they want to. But yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have a number in mind, or you'll come back to us with a number?
Twenty thousand, twenty thousand was just a plugged number as as a placeholder that I think could get us somewhere.
Okay.
Okay, that's all we had.
Okay.
Version one point one, second draft. Thank you for your patience.
Our homework before our next meeting, which is quite a ways out, um because of the eleventh being canceled, um so November eighteenth. We should have our community grants to you before that, is that right? By the eleven, okay. And so I think, again, watch for email update as we continue this conversation about um tobacco tax, whether to fund those groups. I think the other one that we had a lot of discussion about last year, I don't want to go into the details, but it's in there, I just checked, is the Music in the Park Sunday Series. There it is again. I mean, they published a half-page ad where they said, thank you, we're passing the baton, um and I thought I had had enough conversations and that that was gonna um, you know, fly off into the sunset, but it's there, so we'll have to have that conversation.
I think there's a different group trying to get the money for it, and they're working, they're talking to the Chamber too. So I don't know if it's the same people.
It then, it then here under Steve's guitars and with Ralph Pitt as the applicant, which is
Yeah, that is, but I did hear that that it was, I think, being more spearheaded by Cade and Cat Hardy as sort of trying to unify Dandelion Day and Potato Day and some things in between, I guess, as sort of all one themed thing. So I don't know, I guess maybe, I don't know if they, they might not have gotten their ducks in a row to actually represent that in the application, so I don't, I think we should demand, yeah, more of a clear plan for sure than what we got this year, but.
Yeah, I mean, this says free summer concerts to the public, um, partner with Katie and Kay. This sounds like the exact same thing as the past, so.
Um, it would be wise to just take them separately and have a conversation.
That's what we tried last year, uh and we didn't get very far, and so I think it's just, I just wanted to highlight that, like, that's a, that's going to be a challenging one. I'm probably not gonna support funding them just because we had this whole conversation last year, and it feels like it's the same approach, which I just don't know is the best, like, I don't know what our goals are that we're accomplishing with that, but we can, we can have that discussion. What's hard about this is we all want to get our numbers right and then submit them to Patrick with no discussion, which I think is generally good. And better than twenty different groups presenting to us and tugging at our heartstrings. Um, but it does make it challenging, because then when we have a discussion, it's like, oh, I didn't realize that. I funded them at ten thousand dollars and somebody else funded them at zero. It throws off all the rest of the whole thing, so I think we just have to kind of be ready for that.
Well, going back to stepping stones and youth zone, do we just leave it as is for now until we figure out the tobacco tax?
Yeah, I think give us at least a week and we'll have better information. So I'd say go through all the others and think about what level makes sense, and then maybe come back to those uh two or three at the end. It sounds like we're probably going to find a way to fund them externally to this.
I think so.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, anything else for the good of the group this evening?
Um, so do you think I should, like, tell those people to pad their application more or something, or like, or?
No, the application's been submitted.
Okay, so we just, we just, I guess, but do we need more information or not, or I guess, like, because I would, you know, vote it down unless I get something more compelling.
Well, and I think that's a good reminder that we also talked about the fact that you have to recuse yourself from Katie and Kay's stuff. You have to recuse yourself from your stuff, but we talked about not having to recuse yourself from all of it, and then just letting Patrick know, because this is going to be complicated for him, that he needs to run the formula a little bit different based on the ones that you've recused from. So and that goes for all of us, for any organization that you're um directly involved in.
Yeah, and I, I mean, because I I wouldn't say Katie and Kay was actually an applicant on the music thing at all.
Right.
We, they've just like broadcast a couple of them.
Yeah.
Um, as needed, but it's, yeah, it's not really been a true.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, hey. Um, all right, thanks, everybody. Meeting adjourned. We'll see you on the eighteenth of November.
Thanks, everyone.